All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. My name is Lauren Schalkevert, I'm the Chair for the Washington County Planning Board. This is the generally scheduled October 30th, 2025 meeting. We'll start the meeting with roll call, please.
Anthony McNutt. Jay Piercy.
Here.
Mike Thompson.
Here.
Bob Doherty.
Here.
Chantel Perrier. Marla Pearson.
Lauren Schalkevert.
Here. So we have five members, we have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our September 25th meeting. Those have been submitted for your review. Are there any questions, comments, additions, corrections that need to be made to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion?
Second that motion.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we also have approval of... Do we need to approve the minutes from a special meeting, Sam?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. So we also had a special meeting on October the 9th to discuss planning zoning ordinance future in... Uh, gosh, I'm sorry, Washington County. Those minutes are before you as well. If there's any additions, corrections, or modifications that need to be made to those minutes, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of them as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to the approval of tonight's agenda. We do not have a zoning board of adjustments meeting, so we will go directly into the planning board meeting. We have the following items on the agenda. County conditional use permit hearings for Vaughn Recycling, O'Brien Ready Mix, Pup Town Doggy Daycare, Poplin Automotive CUP. And then we have county land development hearings for Carroll Minor Subdivision, Reed Platts of Lot 3 and 4 Windy Hills Estates, and S Properties Minor Subdivision 2. Are there any additions or modifications to the agendas presented?
No, sir.
Okay?
As presented.
If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to motion.
Got a motion?
A second.
And a second to prove the agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's start with the first item, Vaughn Recycling CUP. Start with staff report, please.
Vicinity map, site map, neighbor map. The applicant is requesting a high-intensity conditional use permit to relocate Vaughn Recycling to a 6.52 acre portion of the 13.26 acre subject property, which is currently under contract pending permit approval. Vaughn Recycling would operate as a full-service metal recycling facility serving residential, commercial, and industrial customers. The business will offer both drop-off and roll-off container services for all types of metal, ferrous and non-ferrous. Processed metals will be shipped to domestic buyers for further processing or melting. A large quantity of loose steel brought in by customers will be stored and contained concrete bays on-site and later transported to a local shredder in Rogers, Arkansas. The proposed operation will comply with all regulations set by the county, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. Hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and Saturday from 8 to 1, with 10 to 15 employees working during business hours. The applicant anticipates 50 to 100 customers per eight-hour business day, with most only using the drive-through service. The site would include two 7,500-square-foot main buildings that would be used as a general lobby and warehouse with a dock bay. A 300-square-foot pay window with drive-through, 23 general parking spaces, two ADA spaces, eight-foot fencing and natural vegetation for privacy, a non-illuminated sign attached to the fence, a retaining wall, and a detention pond. If this CUP is approved, it will need to proceed to the large-scale development phase of the planning process.
And this slide like shows like the previous, before like the two, like the August 21st, 2025, when we changed the new zoning. This whole area, most of this whole area, used to be like a no zoning, no county zoning. Basically, it did not require a conditional use permit for approval, but if anything, that development that was like one acre or more required a large scale. So just like for the zoning, if they applied before the August 21st approval, they did not like require a kind of CUP for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
202 notifications were mailed to adjacent properties. Planning staff received 32 emails, letters, and 553 petition signatures in opposition to the project, citing incompatibility, potential health and environmental issues, and devaluation of surrounding properties. Seven comments were received in support of the project, citing the business would help the environment and that it will bring economic growth to the area. These are the planning conditions.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please proceed.
Planning conditions and the applicant is available.
Okay, I apologize, I jumped again there. All right, if you would, please introduce yourself and... Yeah, you gotta push the button, get the little red light to come on there. There you go.
My name is Levi Vaughn, I'm the owner of Vaughn Recycling in Fayetteville. I represent Vaughn Recycling LLC for the request to approve the high-intensity CUP for the property in Springdale. Our business consists of the purchasing of non-ferrous and ferrous metals from residential, commercial, industrial customers all across Northwest Arkansas, Southwest Missouri, and, you know, neighboring cities. What we do when we purchase the metal is we purchase it from the customer, we sort it, package it, and then ship it to domestic and foreign buyers for further processing of the metal to be recycled. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, all right. And you're representing...
I'm Jeff Bates, I'm the engineer on the project.
Okay, all right. Any question of board members of applicants at this time? Okay, seeing none, appreciate it, we may bring you back later. All right, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Couple of comments before we get started. First of all, please remember time limits. Each individual has three minutes to speak. If you're an official capacity representing a group, legal representing, anything like that, you have nine minutes to speak. Obviously, this, I believe, was heard. I was not at the last meeting, but I think this was heard at the last meeting. Any comments that were made previously are of record already, so they don't necessarily have to be repeated. But obviously, we want to take public comment on that. I ask that all public comment be kept civil, directed to the board, and we'll go from there. So if you would like to speak on this... Oh, one other thing. We are considering tonight the conditional use permit only. So what we're... This board is tasked with is looking at compatibility of this. If this is approved, a large-scale development will come pre... Will come after that. The large-scale development is where specific screening, you know, site design, building structure, all that sort of stuff will be addressed. What we're addressing tonight is the conditional use permit, the compatibility in that aspect. So I would ask that you keep your comments related to the conditional use permit aspect of this and not the large-scale development, which would be viewed and reviewed if this is approved at a different meeting. So with that, I will open it up to public comment. If you'd like to make public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you want to say. Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Kelly Franks, and I live at 19315 Neils Bluff Road, and I've lived there for 20 years. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed metal recycling center on 412. I'm not opposed to recycling. The real issue is not recycling. It's the proposed location directly across the road and surrounded by neighborhoods, placing this facility so close to homes, our homes, schools, parks. It's unacceptable risk to the community's safety, health, and quality of life. This proposed location on the busiest and most dangerous road in Northwest Arkansas, while we have school buses that travel this every day, does not work. Not to mention, coming up on this location is somewhat of a blind curve with 50 to 100 trucks and trailers stopping in the middle divide will cause accidents. There is no doubt about that. When heading west up 412 in late afternoon, the sun is already directly in your eyes, and having that kind of traffic turning in and out would be a huge danger to us all. There is a direct correlation to crime when this type of facility is near homes, which decreases our values no less than 10%, making it very undesirable for resale. I am in the mortgage industry, and have been longer than I want to admit, and have spoken to several williters, and this fact cannot be denied. No one is interested in buying a home that close to this type of facility. I pay high real estate taxes and insurance to not get the typical gain that everyone in Washington County is entitled to. It's just not fair. I know you cannot answer this question, but would you want this less than two miles to your own home? These pictures on these posters were taken last month of the care that they have on making this unsightly. And needless to say, it's not something that when you enter Springdale, anyone would be impressed by seeing it as you're coming into Springdale. There are many new businesses along 412 heading east, and they have, for the most part, taken great care to put up nice buildings and things that enhance the area versus not. This would be a huge eyesore. Last meeting, they spoke about fences, but as you can see on these posters that were just taken last month, this is how... Can I come forward or not?
Sure.
Okay. This is what it looks like now.
Again, though, we would be addressing screening, that sort of thing, on a large-scale development. What we're talking about tonight is the conditional use. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it's just they've been there a long time, and this is how they take care of it after being there 10 or 12 years or whatever. I just, you know, and that's on the rise. Sorry, I wrote all this down because I wanted to get it in in three minutes. These pictures on these posters were taken last month. I'm sorry, I lost my track. Last meeting, they spoke about fences. As you can see, the current condition of their property and fencing in no way is hiding this type of unattractive facility, and spreading it out would only be worse. For the health, safety, and well-being of our community, we are asking you to deny this permit. The economic benefits do not outweigh the very real and significant risks this facility poses. We urge them to find a more appropriate location for this industrial operation, one that is not directly near where people live, sleep, play, raise families, and go to school. Thank you for your time and listening to all of our voices opposing this. We did send in 554 signatures opposing this.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we're not gonna have that... We're not gonna do this if there's... We're gonna keep this civil. I don't want applause, cheers, jeers. We're gonna keep this civil if we're gonna have public comment. So please, don't do that. Direct any comments to us, and let's keep this civil. All right, next person that would like to speak.
Good afternoon, my name is Louise Lecone. Me and my family of five live on 2499 Tulip Tree, which is about 100 foot from where this facility wants to go in. I also own a business about 800 feet north through Aaron's Drive. I mean, not only business standpoint for businesses that are there already. I mean, it's really gonna impact, you know, the amount of traffic that's going in and accidents, as I mentioned. Aaron's Drive is really not... I mean, the storage that's there creates traffic. My business creates some kind of traffic, not to mention the amount of traffic that he's bringing in. Aaron's Drive, for sure, it's gonna have to be expanded if hopefully this is not approved. There are single-family homes there. I mean, would you all want your home to be next to this? I don't know why the board is even considering approving this. They're looking on moving to expand, not to relocate. As you can see, those pictures, they've been there so long. What's it gonna do when they have a bigger place? I mean, can they maintain it? I mean, how many acres do they have there now? They're going to 13 right now, so...
It's seven.
Seven?
It's six point something.
Okay, well, I mean, they're buying a total of 13. What's gonna happen when they do a large-scale development?
The large-scale development's where we would address screening, it's where we would address fencing, it's where we'd address hours of operations, all those sort of things to mitigate.
So me as a business... I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Me as a business owner, I looked for years, and Washington County, every time I would call, they would say, "No, no, you can't do it. You can't do it." Why? Because there's single-family homes in the area. We can't disturb that. That is the first thing, and that's how you all shut me down. So why is this even being considered?
Mr. Louise, are you... Do you own the business north of that property?
I do.
You remember, like, we gave you... We gave you like a lot... We gave you a business?
Oh, yeah. And I'm very thankful...
Without a large scale and without a conditional use permit?
Oh, yes, sir.
Because you applied before like that date?
Correct.
So like you... You're just like you're arguing about like something that like you already got passed? And you're saying like we denied you? That's like just absurd.
Well, previous to that. I mean, like I said, I looked for years until I found this spot that you guys approved me for, and I'm really thankful for that.
Yeah.
I am.
And the years I've been there, like I've never seen your name until like you came in, and like we helped you out to get the business.
Yeah, no, and again, I mean, and, you know, I'll backtrack, you know, if I said something that wrong. But I do appreciate that you guys approved me for that, and that is gonna hurt my business. It is. It's gonna hurt other businesses in the area. I mean, there is no such business in the area that's gonna look like that. I'm not saying that he's gonna still continue to do that. He might improve, and I'm not wanting to shut his business down by any means. I'm a business owner, there's a lot of business owners. We all have to do our part. But 12 years in that location, looking like that, it's not acceptable.
Again, we're not looking at the Fayetteville location. We're looking at the location in the county that we will govern with through the large-scale development.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
I guess that's it for now.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, who's next?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Craig Christman, I live at 19555 Neils Bluff Road. Been there since '04. And appreciate the opportunity to come before you with this matter. I took a look at the ordinance petition of the new standards within the county, the zoning, I guess you would call it. And so as I looked at that, and one of the sections, the criteria for a conditional use permit states that it's compatible with the surrounding area. And if I'm not mistaken, this property is now zoned as, in essence, agricultural, one unit per acre. Which to me means, and you correct me if I'm misinterpreting, it's a home site. It's a one-unit dwelling.
Yeah, so there's no zoning in the county. Use by right is agricultural or residential. Anything else requires a conditional use permit, which all the other businesses along 412 there had to get conditional use permits once this went into act. So that's what we're doing tonight. We're considering the conditional use permit on this property.
Okay, and so based upon your criteria for a conditional use permit, it has to be compatible with the surrounding area. Surrounding area is predominantly single-family homes. Not a business of this nature. If I understand the August timeframe, many of the businesses in the area that the petitioner has listed as comparable to what they're asking to build in terms of being a commercial property, would not possibly be approved because of the area would not be comparable and compatible for what's in the area being single-family homes.
If my... I might clarify, it was just like a small like fraction of the whole area. If you take a look, all the red and blue, they applied and they got like conditional use permit from the county since 2006. The other one is just like where like his property is located.
And I believe you're saying the red and the blue is...
They applied for a conditional use permit. It's like north and south, that's like all along 412.
And we're really talking about the...
No, no, it's not north of the property, it's like along the 412. So his property, it's along the 412 where it used to have no zoning. But everything else you see here, like applied for a condition, a conditional use permit and large scale and got approved for it.
Yes, sir, and those are similar businesses to what's being requested now?
It's various, various businesses.
It's a recycling, bringing in unknown metals, ferrous and non-ferrous?
The blue one on top, it's like a query.
Which is not like a recycling facility?
Yeah, they do that nation. They do that nation, it's even like much worse.
I understand, but they're not along 412?
They have a buffer between 412 and that property.
And again...
Owned by the...
And again, I'm asking the board to consider what this criteria is. Is it compatible with the surrounding area? That's unfortunately, that's the challenge that you have.
Yes, sir.
Yet the people behind me seem to indicate, because they're from the surrounding area, they don't see it as compatible. So we're just asking you, because the role that you're in is to consider that, that is it compatible for the area? I have no problem with the company. I imagine with any amount of money, it can meet the large-scale development criteria. But the real question is, is it will be interest, because this is F, will be interest to the use enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the purposes already permitted, not substantially diminish and impair property values within the surrounding area? I'm not sure much comment needs to be made about that for a person that has a home next to that particular project.
Hence the conditions, that's why we add condition to make it as compatible as possible.
Yes, sir, and that's why I'm asking you to deny it, because it doesn't meet the conditions for what you have in your ordinance or whatever you want to call it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And ma'am.
Hello, I'm Carl Abbott, I live at 20047 Vaughn Road. Between my property and where this plant, recycling plant is gonna be, it's just a field. I'm a truck driver, so I know the dangers of driving trucks and how dangerous trucks coming out onto the highway, where this plant facility is gonna be at, would increase risk to the traffic. Just last week, I hit a deer right outside where this plant's gonna be on my way home. And it's hard to see there, it's coming down a hill. So trucks coming out of there with the time it takes them, get speed, coming out front of people doing 80 miles an hour across 412. This place is not compatible with the traffic there that they're trying to bring in. And the comparable businesses that he mentioned last month are places like TNT Express, which doesn't get any trucks in. Places like Dollar General, who only gets one truck in a week. Tractor Supply might get two trucks a week. He's talking about bringing in multiple trucks a day, which increases the risk of traffic collisions out there. Also, the company that mainly hauls their metal, which is TRG, does not upkeep their trucks very well, which causes multiple oil leaks and coolant leaks, which would then get into the ground of groundwater. So this is not compatible.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
I am Bonnie Keaton, I live at 19369 Neils Bluff Road. I am here to also ask that you deny the conditional permit that's being requested for all of those reasons, but really mainly to keep our water clean. We are... This building is within under two miles of five schools in Springdale. The water, once it's contaminated, is very hard to eradicate. Just breathing in the metals and the carcinogens from that, which you do every day, which is probably not good for you, but I also don't want to breathe it in, so I ask that you think about that, and especially the traffic, it's so dangerous on 412. I go out of my way to not use it, and it is literally right at the end of our street, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Hello, Plan Commission, my name is Chad Rungy. I own property right on 412, approximately about a quarter mile away. I want you guys to... Well, I strongly oppose due to a lot of reasons that have already been given. One is, it is 1.6 miles away from our drinking water source. That runoff from that property directly V-line, directly into Beaver Lake. I don't know if you guys are any outdoorsmen or anything like that, but I like to get out there and do some fishing as well, and I also would like to protect our drinking water. I would like to ask you guys, if this was coming to your neighborhood and being put in your front yard, how would you guys feel? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, anybody else?
I'm Ray Eastep.
I'm sorry, sir, if you would...
I'm Ray Eastep, I live at 16944 Highway 412 East, which is on the corner of Hubert Springs Road, which is directly like kitty-corner to Sonora Middle School. The creek bed that comes off of that property runs through the corner of my property. I agree 100% with all this. I have nothing against these people, I know they're fine people. But that's just not a place I would even have considered. I'm shocked that they're even considering it, because first, it's... There's gonna be a lot of traffic of big trucks. That's a very busy place already. Traffic is already ridiculous at the times that they would be wanting to put the most traffic on the road. But one observation that I wanted to point out was that when they... That land is all fill. It's about 40 foot of fill that used to be just an old creek bed, a real wide creek bed. And it's full of who knows what. It's garbage, it's logs, it's dirt, it's who knows... I mean, half of it might be a little paint or toxic waste, because it was a very uncontrolled fill that is now draining out of that land, the dirt there, down that creek into Beaver Lake. Every time it rains, I don't know how they got away with putting all that garbage in there in the first place. And now, I was surprised... I was surprised that they were gonna build anything, looking like they were gonna build anything on top of it, let alone something as big, which doesn't even really seem like it's gonna fit there at all. But, so there's the issue of... I don't even know that they should have a permit to build anything on there other than some tennis courts or something, something with no weight to it, or I don't know, it looks... I just, everything I saw dumped in there over the years, it was disgusting, it was a shame that they were getting away with allowing them to bring that stuff in there. Some, I mean, some of it was rubble, but it wasn't anything like a coordinated, organized way of filling in such a huge spot. And now it's gonna have this place with potential contaminants coming through there? Even if you do your best, you're still gonna get that. You still have the runoff from the stuff they poured in there coming down that creek bed. And then you got the traffic from all of those schools. We've got Sonora Elementary, Sonora Middle School. You've got the School of Innovation, you know all of those. And it's also the east entrance during all of it, from our really scenic entrance to Springdale. It's just gonna look... It's gonna be a mess. I mean, they can put fences up, but the fences are gonna look tacky. I just think we could put a lot better things there. And I definitely think they can find better places to put their property. I love the idea that they're doing this and expanding their recycling. I just, if it were anywhere but other than right there on 412, on that slope where you have all that water runoff, that's the... That's right there where that hilltop there is where the water line, everything east of that runs into the Springdale Illinois River. Everything, or everything west of it runs into the Illinois River. Everything east of it runs into Beaver Lake. So all that stuff's going into Beaver Lake, which we've already got enough issues with our water, so...
Okay.
It's kind of a ridiculous thing, and not only do I agree with the rest of them, I think if there was a proper evaluation of how that land was filled in the first place, they wouldn't be allowing this or even considering this. Second of all, the traffic, like they were saying, the visibility, that's a 45-degree slope there where big trucks are gonna be entering in and out of school traffic all day. I don't know if you know Neils Bluff Road, but it's a very steep road going downhill. It's very hard for them to get across traffic to get on and off of 412 East or to get off of 412 going up Neils Bluff. It's a hazardous spot, and so I just think it's a ridiculous thing to be considered doing. I mean, I'd love for them to put something else, you know, that's gonna provide some prosperity to them, but not that.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else like to make public comment on this?
My name's Teresa Hopwood, I live at 16730 Doolittle Road in Springdale. And I'm one of those that would just face it when I come down that road onto 412. I don't really have anything prepared. I appreciate all the real environmental information. I will say, when I moved here, the beauty of the nature, it just made me feel like this might sound funny, but I'm like, "I'm gonna be closer to God here in Arkansas." And that's my appeal, is the honest look at planning a city. You know, the thoughts I've had around downtown Springdale, like, we're not the stepchild anymore, you know? Our downtown's been redone also, and I've begun to feel proud about it. about it. We moved here, didn't know the area, didn't know where to look, and honestly felt a little like, oh, we didn't pick the best spot, but we've lived there since ninety-eight now. But, so these improvements have meant a lot to me, and I've appreciated, you know, the way the community, the people who have money in the area are investing in the whole area. That's my appeal, is just, a lot of people come here, head out to War Eagle, go to Eureka Springs, and it really, I would just make the appeal that we start planning to make it more beautiful. You know, there's plenty, I guess, land out away from, you know, coming to the lake, going to even, you know, deeper into the beauty of Arkansas, getting away from the city. So that's my simple request, and it's my first time at anything like this, and I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you all very neutral on, like, the information that we're giving, because, or do you kind of, what's your role exactly? It seemed like there's-
We are appointed by the county judge to, we are not elected officials, we're appointed by the county judge to make rulings and recommendations on these sorts of things. There is an appeal process that goes to the quorum court, which are the justices of the peace, which are the elected officials, for, if any ruling that this board makes can be basically appealed to that level, but we are not elected officials, we're appointed to do the planning for the county.
Is it the role to stay neutral and take in all information and you just make the decision that you feel's best without partiality?
We have specific standards that we make the rulings on, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, I wasn't sure, because it seemed like there's been a little, I don't know, resistance or something to some of the appeals of, or maybe just questioning a person's appeal or correcting them instead of just, I, I was just curious, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, who else would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the applicant if you want to address. Obviously, again, you know, we're kind of bleeding over between large-scale development and conditional use. I know there's stormwater runoff, there's all sorts of engineering, everything that has to be done, that's more of a large-scale development process. Obviously, you've heard the concerns, I'll let you have some time to address whatever you want to address there.
Well, I'm the engineer, or will be the engineer on the project, once it goes to large scale, and I'm the middleman, so all I can give you right now is just a few facts that I see. Highway four twelve is a major arterial, it is made for this, it has twenty-two thousand cars a day in this area, I believe there's fifteen to eighteen hundred, eighteen-wheelers. This facility only has three a day, maybe, two or three a day. So it's, to me, I mean, where else would a facility needs to be on a major arterial where it can get easy access? The other thing, just looking at the aerial photo, I mean, it looks like there's a salvage yard adjacent to it, storage unit to the north, and just a field to the west, so it's not like it's adjacent to a subdivision with homes all around it. The other homes are across the street and way away, and, and so, once they get to large scale and put all the trees up, I don't even think you'll be able to see this side, but that is my opinion.
All right, thank you. Okay. Bring it back to the board, questions of the applicant.
So, sorry, this site, when you, when we reference compatibility, and we start talking about commercial, other commercial businesses in there, could you make the same argument for light industrial? What other light industrial businesses would be included in your, if you, if you're arguing, if your argument is it's compatible with the area as it exists because all of these other CUPs, and it's four twelve, and I agree, that's a major US highway.
Yes.
It's four lane divided highway.
Understood. So I believe Braden, the engineer on the project, he sent a document that was forwarded to y'all about the zonings on adjacent properties of east four twelve from that area all the way to Springdale, like downtown where he meets seventy-one business, or two sixty-five. Everything along that was either high intensity commercial or industrial?
It was not industrial.
Well, high intensity, commercial.
Commercial, it was commercial, and that's, that's the reason I asked.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna, I don't, we're, we've had public comment, please let the board and the applicant talk.
Thanks.
And that's the reason I asked, so I did, and thank you for that document, and actually it does show a lot of things that, that you would expect at large scale. But that was my question, is that, so when we look at the commercial areas, say if this was still in the Springdale planning, their, their future use, and that's where that map came from, in these corridors, this area wasn't included in what I would consider light industrial. I would consider your project light industrial, not commercial. So would you make, how, how do you, how do you, how do you match that? Because if I say commercial, okay, there's a lot of commercial around, all up and down four twelve, as far out as you want to go. There's a number of commercial businesses, but I don't see a lot of light industrial.
They're not manufacturing anything, they're, it's just a, it's a drop-off for metal that gets loaded up and hauled off.
It gets sheared and baled. I mean, at that point, we're processing to a, not to a heavy extent, but yes, you're not creating something from scratch, but you are creating something there. Are there other facilities in the area doing the same thing?
So in, in Fayetteville, I believe we're considered a unit thirty-one, which is a recycling facility, it's not a processor of scrap iron, it's, it's a recycling facility. That's what we've always been zoned as, so.
You're processing product, though, you're taking a material and making it into something else to be shipped somewhere else, not for general public to come in and buy from you. You're processing metal. I mean, are you arguing that you're not processing that?
No, we are processing metal.
Is that commercial or light industrial?
I would say it's industrial.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Could you address the visibility?
The, it's above four twelve, so once all the cedar trees or whatever they plant, whatever greenery they put through there, and an eight-foot fence, you're not going to be able to see it coming into town. There will be a time when you're leaving town, because you're above hill, you'll be able to see it.
Again, that will be addressed through the large-scale development process.
Y'all can add more or less.
Assuming we, subject to the conditional use approval, large-scale development will be where we address screening and visibility.
Trying to think of his question, there's, I was trying to think of all the industry coming out of Springdale, like, there's a lot east of the airport, I mean, I know there's FedEx, and there's, God, I can't remember all, there's two or three big processors, west processing companies in there.
All right, other questions of the applicant?
Will there be any shredding on site?
No, sir, no shredding in.
Can we explain the difference between shearing and shredding?
Can I, can I explain the shearing? So all of our shearing is done inside our warehouse, we don't shear steel, we shear malleable, non-ferris materials, which is all done inside the warehouse. You can't hear this, you can't smell it, you can't sense it. It's, it's done in the warehouse, the shear is no bigger than this podium, it's a very small piece of machinery, it's not this giant shredding machine that's producing pollution.
Would the large thing, I mean, if someone wants to equate this with a facility, it would be a baler, right?
Say again?
The baler would be the big thing outdoors that people would see.
It would be inside as well.
The baler would be inside.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're only baling non-ferris material. All the steel, which is the bulk, that's what you think of at metal recycling facilities is the steel, that's what they're going to see from the road, but we're, all that will be contained and loaded loose, we don't process the steel, we process non-ferris materials, aluminum, brass, copper, stainless steel, carbide, tungsten, all that is inside the warehouse processed. The steel will be just stored in the concrete bays as described in the, in the documentation, and then loaded out into open-top containers sent to the Rogers and shredder and Rogers.
Okay, other questions?
Were there any meaningful changes between last submission and this submission? Anything, after listening to public comment, change, any changes made?
Well, all the concerns they have, I understand, and all of them will be addressed in large scale. So, you know, the site, all that will be shown in large scale, the noise, that, all of that will be shown in large scale.
So hours of operation, everything like that?
Everything's the same.
Will be addressed through the large-scale development.
Yes, sir.
Hearing tonight's conditional use permit for compatibility.
The, the plans has been like adjusted, and like they, they showed the improvement on like Adams Road, they showed that they're gonna, they're gonna be in touch with RDOT because they have like requirements for like the size of apron, like the thickness of like that, like entrance, and like he showed, he showed like on the plans, like the vegetation that's going to be added, and like the wash bay.
I believe the only thing that we have added, like Sam said, was we're willing to expand Aaron's Drive, make it wider, so it's easier for the, the resident to get to his business, and so it'll be easy for us to, you know, bring trucks in and out.
Sam, I had a question, the salvage yard that's right there, did that go through conditional use permit, or was that predated to that?
The one across the street, it like doesn't have a conditional use permit, they're operating out of compliance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Would its salvage yard be considered commercial or industrial?
It's, it's going to be industrial, like based on like the, what they store on the property.
Okay, thank you.
There, there are two salvage yards.
Hold on, just, we don't really consider that, we don't, excuse me. Again. We don't, the county doesn't have any particular zoning, and we have single-family residential agricultural, and so it's either that, or it's out of compliance, and, and there is no, at this point with our current code, the way it is, there is no determination outside of that particular zoning, whether it's commercial, industrial, light, heavy, whatever, it's either compliant or it's not, and if it's not, doesn't fit under that single-family residential agricultural, then it requires a CUP to operate regardless. Can you help me understand the difference in a high-intensity CUP and a regular CUP? Sam can probably better explain that than I can.
Yeah, so the, high-intensity is like for anything that is like, it's like mining, quarrying, or like anything that like requires based on the industrial definition, if like you're storing material on the, on the property, of quantities, and that's like what they're doing, the same applies to the like one coming next, so that they're having like stuff that they're going to be store on the property like for a long, long time, and that's based on our definition, that's why we treated it-
I apologize, that's, that's where my confusion was, because of the high-intensity CUP versus a regular CUP.
And yeah, that's why we consider it as high-intensity, just like because of that definition.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions of the board for the applicant? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Vaughn recycling conditional use permit.
We got a motion, is there a second? Second. We got a motion and a second, let's call, roll for votes on this, please.
Micah Thompson?
Yes.
Robert Doughtree?
Yes.
Marla Pearson?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Lauren Sheckelford?
Yes.
All right, that's five out of-
Okay, motion for approval of the conditional use permit is approved. All right, let's move on, the next item, O'Brien Ready Mix Facility High Intensity CUP, please. All right, again. All right, let's move forward, we'll start with staff report for O'Brien Ready Mix Facility High Intensity CUP.
Vicinity map, site map, neighbor map. The applicant is requesting a high-intensity conditional use permit to develop and operate a concrete mixing facility, O'Brien Ready Mix. The property is seven point four two acres in total, with the project occupying four point five acres. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, with work starting anywhere between five thirty and seven AM, and ending between two and four PM, depending on weather conditions and time of the year. There will be ten full-time employees on staff, no customers would be visiting the facility, but there would be four to six mixer trucks coming and going from the facility on business days. Site construction would include a forty-five by eighty shop building, a thirty by forty office building, a thirty-five by eighty plant building, a gravel lot for mixer truck parking, a gravel lot for two employee parking spaces, an aggregate storage area, a semi-opaque chain link fence for privacy screening, a retaining wall, and a detention pond. If this CUP is approved, it will need to proceed to large-scale development. Proposed site plan?
And basically, that's the same as we discussed, like this area was like in an area that before looked the new, or like code has been approved, used to be in like a no-zoning area, so.
Ninety-one notifications were mailed to adjacent properties. Staff received seventy-two emails, letters, and three hundred and thirty-eight petition signatures in opposition to the project citing undesired loud noise, potential health and environmental issues, and incompatibility with agricultural and residential surroundings. Forty-three emails and letters and fifty petition signatures were received in support of this project citing better concrete availability for rural areas and economic growth. Planning conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff from board? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it to the applicant, applicants represented.
Good evening, my name is Jake Chavis with Odyssey Engineering, I'm representing the O'Brien Rock Company here. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight, kind of touched that we appreciate the public's comments on, on the last meeting, and we, we listened, and we hope tonight that we can alleviate a lot of the public's concerns as well as this board's concerns. This is a, it's a family-owned and operated business, it's a small concrete mixing facility, not a concrete plant. I would kind of like to approach this tonight to be maybe more of a discussion on, on maybe what you think we could be doing better in, in our proposal, and maybe just kind of wanted to reiterate that, I think somebody touched on it earlier on in the last item, that all we're asking for tonight is just the, the right to be able to move forward and, and take a closer look at the large-scale development next, next time. I'd like to just briefly talk about the, the site layout. We have an office building, a maintenance shop that, you know, maintains equipment on-site, as well as the, the trucks moving back and forth. We have a mixing plant on-site, we have aggregate storage, where the storage for the mixing facilities are, are staged there, and we also have a, a concrete washout facility where all of the, the trucks and equipment are washed down. And I think most importantly, we have a, a relatively large detention pond located All of the water on-site will be, will be running to this detention pond, and will be required to meet all of the, the state and county regulations in terms of pre and post flows from the site, but we would like to kind of take that a step further. We're, we're going to propose, we'd like you to put this as a condition on our conditional use permit that we treat for water quality as well. We are, we're willing to do that with that detention pond. Um, we are, we're willing to do that, uh, with that detention pond. Um, and then the water, uh, I think it's important to note that the water in this pond will be recycled water. So we will use that for the, uh, wash trucks, mixing, things like that. Kinda wanted to touch on a few of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. Uh, number one is, is traffic. We, we included a traffic statement, uh, in the original conditional use permit application. Our firm believes that this development will not create any kind of traffic issues. We have, I think, initially use permanent application, four or five trucks running out of there. And that's, that's the only thing that's gonna be coming in and out of this facility. Nothing that the highway right there cannot handle. There were a lot of environmental concerns that were brought up in the last meeting. Um, we did have an environmental assessment done on, uh, another location. And just kinda wanted to talk briefly about, uh, kinda the findings of that report. Number one was, was, um, air quality. The environmental report for that other location, um, kinda states that everything is, is within federal regulations there. But again, we're gonna take it a step further, uh, to meet, meet that and kinda alleviate some concerns. I submitted, um, last week, a dust abatement plan, uh, showing, um, perimeter trees to be planted all along the perimeter. Um, and within that dust abatement plan, kind of a, a schedule, uh, and a how-to, um, wash trucks, clean driveways, uh, things like that. The noise at the, at the other facility, the, the maximum, uh, the kind of, the, the peak amount of decibels that were received at the other facility was between fifty-four and fifty-nine decibels. And that's generally, um, the, 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 the noise of a conversation or a low, low-running dishwasher. Um, the light will, will, um, not bleed over the property line. Uh, we are also within federal regulations of light pollution there. Um, and we are, uh, again, gonna take it a step further. And we are gonna provide a, a photometric plan with a large scale development submittal that shows there will not be any bleed over the property line. Um, groundwater samples were taken from, uh, the other facility, uh, that, that we did the study on. No organic compounds were tested. We were within regulation there as well. Surface water, there was a, just kind of a comment, um, last time, um, that were concerns about the pH levels leaving the site. All of the peach, pH levels from surface water at the other facility were within acceptable limits as well. Um, we're gonna take that a step further, kinda what I've previously touched on with the detention pond. We're gonna treat for water quality there. Um, and all of the runoff from site will be running to, to the detention pond. Just kinda wanna make a brief statement here about how, you know, it's kinda my job to prepare these hydrological analysis's, um, pre and post development. Uh, you know, we're going to have our ADEQ permit, um, and we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And I know you all know this, uh, but we cannot move forward with any kind of construction until obviously all those permits are in place. And, and several of those are regulated by, by the state, not just the county. Wanna briefly touch on some concerns with Bob Kidd Lake that were brought up last time. Reiterate that. Our, the runoff from our property does go into Bob Kidd Lake. Uh, but again, we are, uh, gonna go above and beyond with our detention pond and treating for water quality. Generally, that, that removes seventy to eighty percent of the total suspended solids, uh, that are leaving the site. There are also some other industrial businesses, um, in the, in between us, uh, and Bob Kidd Lake. I believe there's a Boston Mountain Recycling is one of those, those businesses as well. I do want to call on the owner, who's just gonna give kind of a brief, uh, talk about general operations, um, that they have on site. And then we have another, uh, uh, team member that's gonna kinda finish up in our closing statements.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Kyle O'Brien of O'Brien Ready Mix. I can speak on kinda what we do and how we do it, or wait till the end and field questions from you guys, what would be the best option. Or I can field questions now if you want me to, who doesn't?
Any questions of the applicant from other previous, or from board members at this time? We'll, we reserve the right to ask you to come back and address some other stuff later if you're good with that.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Good evening. Uh, my name's John Scott. I'm an attorney that represents O'Brien. Um, I'm independent, you know, here in Fayetteville is where I work. I'm not employed by the company. There has been reference, and we had some questions from Sam about that they're, you know, it's, it's known, it's public record that a handful of neighbors in Gentry have filed a lawsuit up there. And, and there were some concerns, you know, based on the, the allegations of were we properly zoned? Were we properly annexed? Were we making asphalt? And Sam had those questions because they appeared in the initial case. And so I wanted to clear up to the board and to the extent any of the, any of the, the citizens may have a misperception of what's going on there. There is not, the, the court, there was an allegation that they weren't properly annexed into Gentry and that they weren't properly zoned. The court threw that out as a matter of law, said you're barred, you cannot bring that. That's not a part of the case. There was an allegation about a neighbor that we weren't associated with called TriStar that had bought an adjacent lot. There was an allegation that we were somehow either with them or that there was gonna be an asphalt plant made. We had no involvement with that entity and that entity was dismissed from the lawsuit. I think they may be selling their property. So I just wanna make it clear, we don't make asphalt. You know, sometimes Jethro back on the Beverly Hillbillies had a cement pond. People talk about cement. Cement, we don't make cement. If anybody knows anything and has read articles about what a cement plant manufacturing does, we don't make cement. This is just combining good old earth products of sand, rock, gravel, water. And there is a small portion of that in the stew that's cement powder. Cement powder, the others are just good grates from the earth. I mean, if we gotta, you know, rocks aren't toxic, sand's not toxic. If there's an allegation that cement powder, if you put it right up in your face and smell it, should you do that? Probably not. But cement powder is delivered in enclosed tanker trucks. It's put directly into enclosed hoppers, which would be a part of the, I don't wanna get to the large scale, but it's handled very carefully. It's an important product, but it, it's not wasted. I mean, I've, the guys can say, we, we monitor how much we buy. We're not having shrinkage. We're not releasing plumes of cement into the air. But, so, that's, I just wanted to answer those because I know Sam had wanted, and I'm not sure that got spread to everyone that the answers are we, and we beyond that, in that case, we, we strongly defend and deny that, that we've done anything wrong up there. And I, I, my opponent in that case is Mr. Zega, who, he's apparently against concrete because he's here tonight. But, uh, he's the opponent in that case, and he'll find out soon. We've had, we've engaged extensive, highly qualified environmental engineers to come into, like you said. Kinda careful because we don't have the signed final report, but I've got a report he said is gonna be final. So I know he's gonna say that they did extensive testing for all sorts of points for sound. And it's not ninety-five decibels. And so I, if somebody read, these things are ninety-five decibels, no. The highest it ever gets when, and this is periodic during hours of operation, is in the mid-fifties. And that's right at the site where it's getting, where it's being made. Sound dissipates as it goes away. Light has been analyzed thoroughly, it all, from all directions, even from the property of the complainants in that case. It's well, it's a low candle unit that they measure that in, well within any limits of light. And like you said, there's gonna be other measures. And same thing with the, the pH level. Somebody said, this water that's gonna leave there is a twelve pH. That's almost cleaning chemical pH level. It's, and that's just, you know, I've, if somebody believes that, I would be concerned. But this pond has to grow, it has fish and turtles in it. It has to be maintained at a level that maintains life, grass and animals. And it's about a, it's a neutral. It's about a seven or six. It's well within limits, the pond of the water. And, and that water is really designed to mostly stay from anything when you wash trucks, it goes into that pond. It's not just running off the property. That, there's gonna be a grading plan. So I don't think, you know, I want the, the you, and I want the citizens to understand that we're not unleashing volumes of water off the property. Most, if not, you know, a large portion will stay within the four walls or four corners of the property. Groundwater has been tested extensively. There's no groundwater concern. All measurements are fine. And dust and particulates have been measured and they're well within limits of what's required. And that, and we do answer, we want everybody, you know, this process is great, this is America. These people own property out there and I'm happy they've had their opportunity to state their concerns and they're legitimate. We respect their concerns. And we appreciate that you respect that, you know, O'Brien has actually purchased this property. We're title owners, not like some sort of contingency plan or during a feasibility study, we own it now. And we'll own it if it's denied. We won't be able to use the property. Uh, and, but, so want you to know that, that they're true owners. And I've represented the, the O'Briens and it's a family business, really. It's three guys, Kyle, Dwayne, and Michael O'Brien. And I can tell you, every time I have a phone call, they're all three on the call. They're interested, they will know their employees. And they are committed to coming into community in Gentry. They've done things like helped, if the city needed some extra concrete for a sidewalk, they wanna be a good, good neighbor and they'll help donate the, the concrete if that's what it takes to be a good citizen. They're not, they and to the, you know, again, speaking to traffic, heard a lot of traffic in the previous issue, or the previous matter. And there, there's a concern, well, we're gonna have traffic. Well, the, the reality is, is that Washington County's growing and people are building houses. They're building houses from Farmington to Prairie Grove to, to, uh, Lincoln. Someone's gonna deliver concrete to those communities. And it could be coming, you could have it coming from Mid-Continent Concrete or Eagle Concrete or somebody from Oklahoma or somebody buzzing through from in Fayetteville, buzzing out through there to deliver and hurrying back. But we hope that everybody understands, this is gonna be, this, our employees, this is where they work. And they're gonna be originating from this location, right in the community, and coming to and from. And it's not gonna do us any good for them to be reckless drivers, to be slamming on jake brakes. We don't allow that. And so we hope that as far as traffic, that everybody would understand, concrete will come to the community. And we think that this would be, it's very feasible because one of the first things is, is the location located on a main order? Yes, this is. And the concrete will be slowly arriving and departing from within the community to the areas that need the concrete. And it's not gonna be inters, you know, across town, cross county, cross state, you know, traffic coming through from somebody who has no connection to the county. We will have a connection to the county and I think that's gonna be good for everyone. So, you know, in the end, I appreciated that, uh, Commissioner, the chairman pointed out earlier today, tonight is an opportunity that just says, can we move forward to use this property we own and go to the next step to meet all the regulations, all the requirements, that we can actually do business? We have no incentive to buy this property and flout the rules or do any, make anyone mad because we're gonna have to invest, you know, I say we, the client will be investing in the property, employing someone, and hopefully being a good neighbor. And so, uh, I'm, if there's any questions, kinda more on the, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I don't speak engineering, is, but I, I kinda speak, try to hopefully set the stage for what this is tonight, and we appreciate your, your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, any questions of the applicant from the board? Seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Again, comments that I made earlier, comments that were made previously in this meeting are of record, don't have to be repeated. Obviously, you have your right to say what you wanna say. Please limit your speaking to three minutes as an individual, nine minutes if you're a hired representative of a group. Uh, and again, we are addressing the conditional use permit of this. The actual nuts and bolts of the development will be reviewed and approved through a large scale development process. That's not what we're doing tonight. We're talking about a conditional use permit for the opportunity them, for them to proceed forward to a large scale development. All right, with that said, if you would please state your name and address for the record and let us know what you're thinking.
My name's Ashley Hammer. I live at eight oh one Cedric Drive. I own that property and it's, as a crow flies, about a mile from where this is proposed. There are three lakes within a five-mile radius, if you just go through the woods to this. Uh, the dust pollution from these are well-known and well-documented in different cases. The current litigation in Gentry for the private nuisance is just about the dust, the noise, and the water runoff from the non-point source. We're worried about our property value decreasing, our health. I have asthma and this kind of dust will actually prohibit me from being outside. I, Prairie Meadows is the closest subdivision to where this is proposed. There's a lot of outdoor activity. There's a pool. The baseball fields are right there. So any kids that have any kind of respiratory issues are going to be very limited on what they can do. Also, where they're wanting to build this is right across from a vet clinic that is extremely busy and they're not gonna do well with all of the dust, the noise, and the constant traffic through there. It's kind of almost on a corner. It's fifty-five miles an hour through there. And I know four to five trucks is not a lot. It's, I'm not sure, maybe forty-five or fifty yards. I, I can't remember. It's been a while. Not sure how that's gonna be super helpful to all of the building that's going on in Prairie Grove, just to have four or five trucks. Also, the, uh, I reached out to the game of fish because of the lakes in the area. And there are, they said several caves in that area that potentially house the endangered Ozark Big Ear Bat and the Indiana Bat. And so they're interested in seeing the plans for this due to the noise pollution that would disrupt them during the day as well as the dust, or the noise pollution that would disrupt them during the day, and the dust pollution that's going to potentially cover their water sources, their food sources, and to hang out in the air. It's extremely windy through there. So no matter what kind of abatement they do, that dust is still gonna travel. The particulate size, particulate matter size of these particles that this is gonna emit is, is not going to stay where they want it to stay. So that's going to also travel. So hopefully this commission will consider that, you know, those of us that have lived there for years, decades, we do not want something like this in our backyard. It's, goes against everything. And I know it's in the county and not Prairie Grove. Prairie Grove's known for its small-town feel, not for its industrial feel. There is a lot of growth going on. I understand concrete is necessary for that growth, but this is something that needs to be built five miles from our residence so that the particulate matter doesn't travel and cause respiratory issues or anything like that to anyone, especially to our elderly that like to go out there. They like to take the folks from the, uh, Health and Rehab there in Prairie Grove out to Bob Kidd Lake to that big area where they go out and they fish. And that's gonna be really hard for them to do if there's all this stuff in the air, there's not a lot of fish anymore, uh, because of, uh, the damage that this will do. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Steve Zega. As Mr. Scott indicated, I'm an attorney. I do happen to be active in that litigation in Benton County, representing the homeowners next to the O'Brien Ready Mix Plant in Gentry. I also represent a group of property owners, uh, here tonight. I had not actually intended to speak, but after Mr. Scott spoke, I felt it important to tell y'all. He, he's right about half the case. There were allegations that it wasn't properly zoned, that it wasn't properly annexed. We made those allegations. That's half the lawsuit. The other half of the lawsuit is nuisance, that O'Brien Ready Mix is operating in such a way that it keeps the surrounding property owners from enjoy, enjoying, quietly enjoying their homes. That they create dust in an excessive amount so that people can't enjoy the outside. That they create noise in an excessive amount so that it wakes people up. That they've been operating at two in the morning, that they've been operating so that light shines in people's houses at night while they're trying to sleep and it wakes them up. These are all allegations in our lawsuit right now. We are not going to, I am not going to litigate this case before you tonight, but I'm going to tell you that just saying to you that that whole case was about zoning and annexation tells half the story. I will not take up the remainder of the time. I think it's better for you to hear from the property owners and the neighbors than it is from me. Uh, and there is an official spokesperson for that purpose tonight. That's Kimberly Fuller. She represents the neighbors and she'll be up here in a minute. But please don't think that there was just a technical argument to be made about compliance with zoning and annexation in Benton County. That lawsuit is about a lot more than that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Fuller and my family and I own sixteen acres on Bob Kidd Lake. We are immediately over the hill from where this plant would go. There are quite a few people here tonight who are opposed to the approval of the CUP for O'Brien Ready Mix. I'm speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors, so I will speak for nine minutes. Some other people wanna speak for themselves. Tonight, we're asking you to consider the full consequences of allowing a high-intensity concrete mixing facility so close to where people live, where children play, and where families and wildlife thrive. The mere fact that O'Brien had to send out over ninety certified letters within a half-mile radius of the proposed site tells you that this location is not appropriate for a concrete batch plant. This is a residential and agricultural neighborhood. It is not an industrial zone. It is not an industrial zone as O'Brien claims in its application. That is simply not true. We respectfully but strongly urge you to deny this proposal. I will speak to four main areas of concern: health impacts, financial consequences, environmental risks and community quality of life. Let me begin first with what's most important to me is health. Concrete mixing facilities are well-documented to emit toxic particulate matter, crystalline silica and other air pollutants such as sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide. These particles don't respect fences or zoning lines or a few trees. They travel through the air and into our lungs. Concrete dust can travel up to five miles from the plant and the dust's very tiny nanoparticles can travel up to 20 miles and are particularly dangerous as they can be absorbed directly into our bloodstream and other organs. Prolonged exposure to this toxic dust can lead to serious respiratory illnesses such as silicosis, for which there is no treatment, respiratory tract and lung cancers, which are almost always fatal, COPDs like slowly suffocating to death and asthma and bronchitis. In addition to lung diseases, other health impacts include cardiovascular impacts, skin and eye irritation and whole-body toxicity due to heavy metal exposure such as lead, chromium, cadmium that are contained in concrete dust and wastewater. The, O'Brien said that there's only a little tiny bit of cement and that it goes into a silo, but from what I understand, cement is brought in a tanker truck and it's actually blown into the silo under high pressure. So, that blasts that cement, which is extremely toxic, more toxic than the sand and the gravel admittedly, but that blows that into a silo and there's a filter at the top. Filter doesn't catch everything. Maybe the filter isn't there. That goes right out and flies through the air and people breathe that in. So, I want you to be aware of that. You can easily search and find all this information on the internet. This isn't, this isn't special. This is common knowledge. People living around these plants have these health issues. Children, elderly and people with pre-existing conditions are especially vulnerable. I know with at least one of my neighbors whose doctor has written a letter that if this plant is approved, a child's health could be gravely affected. Sam has a copy of that letter. You, you are aware now that there is a lawsuit in Benton County that includes O'Brien. Plaintiff's in that lawsuit publicly complain about the dust. They say they have developed respiratory symptoms and suffer continuous coughing. You get the idea. Concrete dust is not good for our bodies and it will travel on the prevailing south wind directly onto my and my neighbor's properties and Bob Kidd Lake. The harms are real. By its nature, concrete batching is a dirty, dusty, noisy, messy business. It does not belong in a residential or an agricultural area. Concrete batch plants typically operate in the range of 80 to 100 decibels. That is publicly available and I can provide you studies that show this if you would like. How loud is 90 decibels? It's equivalent to a motorcycle engine or someone shouting in your ear. Think about that starting at 5:30 a.m. and going all day. And I have a question for O'Brien and that is, do any trucks start showing up or arriving, start up materials trucks that deliver the sand and the gravel? Do they start arriving before 5:30 a.m.? Can you turn off your lights at night or do they run all night? There's also the very regular loud noise of constant mixing of gravel in metal containers. In addition to airborne toxins and noise, other dangerous health impacts come from the contamination of our groundwater. Concrete batch plants use tremendous amounts of water. A plant of this size with six trucks running 10 hours can consume 24,000 gallons of water a day. An additional 1,400 gallons per day is used to wash six trucks out. At five days a week, that's 6,600,000 gallons of water use per year. At 1,400 gallons per truck, six trucks a day, that's 364,000 gallons of washout wastewater that is loaded with toxins and is either spilled or dumped onto the ground. It may go into your pond, but can your pond handle that much water? That's a lot of water. And additionally, this toxic water seeps and even if it is in a pond, it will seep through our karst geography and travel well beyond this industrial site location and could contaminate groundwater for miles. So, from a health perspective, should you decide to approve this concrete batch plant, you could be exposing me and my neighbors for many miles to dust particulate that can cause silicosis and cancer, expose us to toxic contamination of our ground and drinking water and expose us to deafening noise. We understand that our expanding community needs concrete and economic growth, but at what cost? Our 10 jobs worth the health and environmental impacts I've just described on a whole community? So that a few companies can make money from this location? Speaking of money, numerous studies, including government studies and real estate market analyses have shown that industrial sites reduce property values. A 2015 Economic Association study found that homes within a half a mile of an industry, industrial facility degrease by 11%. My own realtor said it's going to vastly decrease your potential pool of buyers. Do you want to live next to a concrete plant? Sir, do you live next to a concrete plant?
Ma'am, if you would, please address the board and not the applicant. Thank you.
I can do that. Another local real estate expert, and I have a letter here, says that the value per acre in this specific location will drop 20%. That's $10,000 to $13,000 per acre that residents will lose on the value of their property. The presence of this kind of industrial activity can also deter other small investment, business investment into our community. In addition to hurting our health and financial well-being, concrete plant wastewater and runoff is high in pH and often contains heavy metals, alkaline waste, cement residues and chemical additives. If this runoff reaches Bob Kidd Lake and the Illinois watershed, there is a, as I understand it, there is a creek that goes behind there that will pick up dust and contaminants from this site and that will, that will impact the Illinois watershed. It's not a question of if, but when. We are looking at serious ecological degradation. Fish kills, algae blooms and contaminated groundwater are well-documented outcomes near other concrete plants across the country. It also changes the pH of the soil, makes it difficult to grow food and for plants to absorb nutrients from the soil. Let's remember, this is the only community lake in Western Washington County and you have the power to protect it. No other planning committees have permitted industrial facilities to be built next to community lakes. So, even if you think that it's okay to put it here, other areas don't have lakes that need to be protected. That makes it especially vulnerable. And while the O'Brien Rock Company may argue that they'll follow regulations, history shows that violations are common in this industry. We are a family-oriented neighborhood. Our children play on the land where this facility is located and we take pride in this being a safe, quiet and livable area. Introducing a high-intensity concrete facility into the heart of this residential and agricultural community disrupts this balance. It will increase industrial traffic, as they said, on Highway 62, traffic that goes 55 miles per hour. It increases the risk of accidents damaging our roads and adding congestion to streets that were never designed for loads such as these. If you look at near the concrete batch plant in Gentry, you can observe the wear and tear on the road, deep potholes, gravel alongside of the road that can fly up and damage passing cars. I've heard that sometimes there are trucks backed up onto the highway waiting to enter the yard. Stop traffic on a 55 mile an hour highway can take lives. A facility like this belongs in a properly zoned industrial park, far from homes and schools. The Prairie Grove schools are 1.3 miles from this site. And natural resources need to be protected. We understand the need, like I said, for concrete materials, but we don't believe that growth should come at the expense of public health, environment or the well-being of our neighborhoods. O'Brien may want to be a good neighbor, but they cannot be a good neighbor in a neighborhood simply because of the nature of their business. Do I have any more time?
You're actually two minutes and 40 seconds over. I'm giving you some leeway. So, if you could wrap up, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to add that we submitted 334 signatures on a petition opposing the CUP to Sam on Monday. I actually have 143 more signatures to present to you tonight. That brings us to a total of 400, well, actually, it was 338, I think you said on your screen, which brings it to 480. So, we have 480 residents who don't want this. If you look at O'Brien's letters and I did see their petition, they have 52 signatures in support. On the third page of their petition, six signature from the bottom is "Poyo," Spanish for chicken, "some chicken somewheres" in support of this plant. So, how serious is their petition? Are their signatures representative of the people who will be most impacted? And their letters that they submitted, if you look at them, same font, same margins, same wording, they're form letters. None of us residents submitted form letters opposing this plant. All of our email communications were impassioned pleas unique to each of us. So, in closing tonight, I'm not just asking you to consider the technical merits of this permit request, I'm asking you, please, protect our homes, protect our health, protect our environment. We urge the commission to put the public interest over private gain, to consider the long-term consequences and say no to approving this concrete batch plant in this location. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Okay, who else would like to speak?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Ashley Lester. I am speaking on behalf of the Ward family and myself. We live at 16239 Bill Campbell Road. We are less than 1,000 feet from the proposed site. We have a few beehives, chickens, dogs, lots of cats and lots of wild visitors, road runners, songbirds, even foxes that pass through at dusk. Our animals and the wildlife around us rely on the natural rhythms of daylight and dark, on clean air and on quiet nights. Bees don't care about property lines. If this plant goes in, it's not just going to be about the dust or the truck noise. We are mainly concerned with our family as well, with the 24-hour lights. These lights don't turn off. They do cut through fields, they cut through trees, they disorient bees that navigate by the sun, they keep our chickens awake, they confuse road runners who come out for insects. And it's easy to forget how many living things depend on darkness to rest and survive. Our property is exceptionally dark. We can almost see the Milky Way. I would hate to have that taken away from us with the amount of light pollution that would happen. We chose this place because it's rural, it's not remote, but it's alive, the hum of crickets, not the rumble of mixers, the glow of fire lights, fireflies, not floodlights. And while progress is important, it shouldn't come at the cost of peace and balance that define this community. I'm asking you tonight to not, to think not just about the land use, but about how that land lives, the soil, the water, the animals and the family who belong to it. I really hope that you can help protect the rural character of this, of our homes and to deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
I don't live in the immediate area.
That's fine. Just if you would, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Julie Odom. I live at 3893 East Heritage Parkway. And one thing that bothers me about all of this is the attorney made a great statement. You know, he said, "It's a good family." Whenever I've spoken to them, all three members are on the phone. That has nothing to do with anything. And he says they're getting, hire local people. I don't know if they're going to hire local people. He, you know, he's saying, "Well, the turtles and fish are going to be in the pond." Really? In the pond at a cement plant? I just, I don't think so. I hope that you all will not permit this to happen. If they bought the land and then want to put a plant there, it seems like they would have considered everything before they put money into the land. I mean, it, it's not our fault that they bought the land. And then I have one more concern and then I'm going to sit down. If in fact, they say they're going to, the lights are going to be shaded, they're going to have trees around, all the time in Northwest Arkansas and other places, I see promises made. "Oh, we're going to do this. Oh, we're going to do that. We're going to grow trees." And you go by a couple of years later and it looks like crap. I mean, I don't see, you know, usually in two years, you have to go and see if they're really doing it, but long-term, we are talking long-term here. I don't think this is going to be good at all, long-term, for this community. I mean, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Beau Gage. I live at 10675 Bob Kidd Lake Road, also own property on Bill Campbell Road. And I do appreciate the steps that they're willing to take. I spoke last time, I'm not going to reiterate that stuff, it's all been said. So, I do appreciate the steps that they're willing to take and the stuff they've put out there in front. Looks like they're going to have to spend a lot of money to combat the stuff we brought up the last time. So, the first thing I would say on that, it seems like it might be more feasible for them to invest that money somewhere else that would be a better fit for what they're doing before they have to spend all the money on doing all the retention ponds, the trees, all that stuff that they're, they're needing to put in to appease the neighbors. The next thing is, I wanted to ask, they said they're going to be open certain hours. So, I just want to throw these questions out there. I know I can't ask them and they can't answer, but I want to throw these questions out for you guys to think about, is how will the operation hours be regulated? They say they're going to operate between, you know, 5:30 and four or whatever that is. What happens when they open at midnight and don't close till 8 o'clock that night? Who's over that? Who stops that? Does it ever stop?
Yeah, so all that would be addressed at the large-scale development and it would be policed by the Washington County Sheriff's Department.
So, it would be policed, okay. That's, that's good to know. The next thing, how will the number of trucks stay at only four to six? Because if their use permit, they're asking for four to six trucks. We know business grows and obviously this is a large-scale development they're wanting to do eventually, so they are going to initially or eventually want more than that four to six trucks than what they're asking about right now. Because businesses don't go in to stay the same size. They go in to grow. So, that being said, that's only like four feasible acres where they're putting that and the contour of the land is very contoured with a creek running through it. The amount of development, amount of growth, it's going to be hard for them to grow there unless property values drop around them and they buy people's property right around them immediately. And I see that that's probably the long-term goal of the company. I mean, just thinking business-wise, because you don't put it, go into business and expect to get smaller. You want to get bigger. So, that being said, I think there's probably places that are more feasible for them to grow rapidly and with the community, because it is growing and it does need it. I'll use concrete. I love concrete. I'm not against them, I'm just against where it's at. And the other question I have is for four to six trucks a day, if they do just stick to that, how many trucks of gravel is that sand and rock that come in? From my estimates, I think it's about 16 trucks of dump trucks in and out to supply those four to six trucks that they will be having mixed. The other deal is, the lawyer had sent, said something about the highway and how trucks would be driving up and down it, coming from other places as well. Well, the difference is, if any of you have been there, I would, if you haven't, I would suggest you go there before you approve this because it is in a blind corner, Davis's Body Shop right there. It's hard to even pull out of his body shop. You just kind of have to look and floor it because it's right in the middle of the corner. I went by real slow the other day because I don't want to make any accusations that are not true. And I was sitting here going, "Man." Me and my son were rolling through there and a dump truck pulled out of Greasy Valley Road at two miles an hour and we were going 55. We saw him plenty of time. We still ended up right on his butt. So, he was like, my 14-year-old son said, "Man, if they put that cement plant here, imagine if we're in that corner and one of those trucks pulls out at two miles an hour." He's like, "There's nothing we can do but hit them." And I said, "I agree." This is my 14-year-old son can see that. And so, I want you to take that in consideration. They might all drive through there, but they're not all pulling out right there. So, you're looking at 16 dump trucks in and out a day, plus their four to six trucks and possibly even more than that. What about all the, when all the promises are made but not kept? Their quality, the water quality, the trees to block out everything? Like I say, I do appreciate all they're saying, they're doing, I'm just saying, how do you make sure that that's all done, once it's all approved? The noise level, I just live across the lake and they just put asphalt down in the middle of the night. My wife couldn't sleep all night because of them putting asphalt down on the pavement. It shook our whole house and we are across the lake. Sound travels out there. It travels immediately. It will disrupt everything that goes on in the lake during those hours. And then the other question I have, where will all the water come from? And then the other question I have, where will all the water come from that they're going to use? Is it going to deplete wells out there, are they going to run city water out there? The next thing I want to say is, with the large-scale development, for them, the only way to grow is to buy up the property around them, and that's, that's the only thing I can see, and I feel like that's their long-term goal, and I think that needs to be addressed before they move on with the small scale.
And again, we are kind of bleeding back and forth between conditional use and large-scale development. I do want you to know, large-scale development would be approved with those conditions, if those were, conditions were to change, it would require a new large-scale development, which would be new notification, new hearings, everything else, just to ensure.
Right, and that's what I was asking, is for y'all to consider, once they get through that, then we're going to be into this next big deal. That's why I'm saying, I feel like it would be a waste of time, or it would save some time if we look at those future things that would happen, and put a stop to it now.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, thanks for, thanks for y'all's time and your continued service to the county, I really appreciate it. My name's Robert Nicholas Riggins, I'm a sixth-generation Riggins from right here in this local area, combat vet, right after nine-eleven, joined, you know, right after high school, attended the University of Arkansas, and I say all this because I love my home, I love this area, I've been all over the world and settled here, it's always been my dream to, to own a property in Fayetteville, really, but with the, how busy everything is getting, it just wasn't conducive with my mental or physical health. And that's what led us to Prairie Grove, right outside the city limits, right in between two cute little communities where everything that we needed is there, but we were outside the city limits in a beautiful spot, like one of our other, our neighbors were speaking. Just yesterday, we were out wild foraging lions, mane, turkey tail, reishi, all on our property, our ten-acre property there. First off, I wanted, just my per se grievances, I was never notified about this. If you look on the map that has the highlights of the property, could you pull that up, sir? Somebody that's, could, all right, one more, please?
There.
All right, two more. Keep going, I apologize. One more?
Yeah, there's, that's, that's the circle right there.
You showed, you showed something in the beginning where it had the highlighted within twenty-five-hundred meters or feet of the property. My residence is still not even acknowledged on that map. My house was built in nineteen ninety-five by the gentleman that, that was responsible for building the veterinarian clinic right there, it's, it's, it's on all, all the counties. What are they going on, I'm sorry? Where you have to get, everybody comes in and looks at the property lines and everything, that house has been there. I was never sent a letter, it was actually sent to my grandfather, I'm a third-generation Robert Riggins, it was actually sent to my grandma, my grandma, my grandma and my grandpa's residence in Fayetteville. We never received anything. The last meeting, we, we pointed out that we're still there, and that leads me into the whole point of this, is the compatibility, compatibility on their application, I feel like it's very, very misleading on how they played off on, you know, the industrial or commercial use, of which it's not zoned for that at all. It's, I'm just going to read a couple little things here, and I kind of mentioned it last time, I'm sorry for repeating myself, on the compatibility part of the application, under the bulletin minimal, under the bulletin minimal impact for residential area, it states, and I quote, "There are no immediate residents," I'm immediate residents, "there's no immediate residents that would be negatively, negatively impacted by the proposed use and further supporting our appropriateness for this location." Simply not true, we will be negatively affected by it. A matter of fact, I'm working on receiving letters from both the mental health department and my primary care physician through the VA, that, that this will have a direct negative effect on my health, you know? Also, it, it, it states there, in the compatibility section of their application, under the bulletin minimum impact to residential comfort, it says there, and I quote, "Given the commercial and industrial nature of the surrounding area and the lack of immediate residence, and residential developments, the operation will not interfere with the comfort and general wear felt of the public." Simply not true, and again, it's incredibly misleading on the application. I mean, we are here, there's, there's cows that are bordering their property line, they mentioned several times in the application that there's no agricultural in the area. If I'm not mistaken, it's kind of like the, the last bond, it's not zoned, but it's like the conditional residential agricultural area, which is why we're applying for the conditional use permit. I'm going to, I'm going to drop this. So essentially, I'm asking y'all to please just to see these, the invalid, false information that was, that was put on the application, they've had an opportunity to see that, and, you know, they keep speaking of going above and beyond, well, the reality is, the community just doesn't want it there. It's just not the proper compatible location. So I thank you very much for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. All right, anybody else like to make public comment?
Good evening, my name's Carrie Hildebrandt, and I live at one-one-five-one-four Suncrest Road, which is directly behind the Vinewood Animal Clinic. So from my mailbox, I can see the proposed area. I want to bring up the application that was signed by Jake, and it says that the following statements and answers here are made, all data, information, and evidence submitted are the best of my knowledge and belief and true to be correct. Multiple times in this application, it says there's no residents that could be affected by this, and hopefully, these gentlemen looked at this property before they purchased it. On either side of the proposed property, there are cattle, there are homes. They say that it's mostly industrial. What about an animal clinic, a church, and a storage unit is industrial? I understand that we do need concrete for growth, but I would like to point out that this is just not the correct location for this type of business. We are growing food, we are raising animals. Also, I, I agree with everyone about the watershed, it is on a slope. You can build ponds, ponds overflow, it's going to go in the muddy fork, and it will go into the Illinois River. Yes, I would just like you guys to really consider that the community has come out, and we are opposing this. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
How are you?
Hello.
My name is Dr. Tyler Franz, I'm the owner of the animal clinic that's right across the road. The dust that comes from these plants are known, researched, aerosolized irritants that do cause respiratory diseases. The gentleman spoke about how they just mixed rock, dirt, sand, you can put your face in it, and it doesn't hurt you. I've been treating animals with shipping fever, that is a dust irritant pneumonia in cows, horses, dogs, cats, for eight years now, so I wouldn't advise sniffing dirt. So just wanted to correct his statement that it's just good old earth elements, no, they harbor bacteria, bacteria is aerosolized, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir.
Excuse me, doc, could you repeat your name, please, for the record?
Tyler Franz.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hello, my name is Sheila Phillips, and I live at one-six-two-nine-seven Bill Campbell Road. I live right on the south side of Bob Kidd Lake, and we have lived there for, my husband, Steve and I, have lived there for, right at thirteen, almost fourteen years. That was our dream home, we bought that there, paid quite a pretty penny for our property. We love the community feel of that. I was one of about ten residents that are within that half-mile radius that did not receive a certified letter. I found out about the proposal from the Fullers who left a flyer on my, my door. I have spoken with several others, like I said, so that, that means there should have been about, about a hundred, maybe a little less, of the certified letters sent out to that half-mile radius. Ninety-five percent of those hundred people are property owners, and they are, it's residential agricultural use, not industrial. About five percent of it is light commercial. I know in the application, it does say that they're not going to have any more impact than would, like, the Body Shop, or the Vinewood Animal Hospital. That's kind of like comparing a flyswatter to a breaking ball. High industrial, or high-intensity industrial permit is totally different from a light commercial. And I feel like, to be honest with you, I'm kind of, I'm a holistic health practitioner, I'm very well-versed in the studies, I have poured and poured over hours of research on the health impacts, like what Dr. Franz was talking about, and I do know sand, rock, those things are natural. But I will remind you, in, in a large amount, or even small amount, some natural products like arsenic can be very toxic. So the cement part of that definitely plays a huge part in that, and it does go airborne. My husband is one that is, he has a respiratory disease, has scarring in his lungs, and have spoken with his doctor within this last week, and he said, "If this does go in, he will not be able to live there, he will not, there's no way he can." And part of that problem with that is, if we go to try to sell our property, our Realtor and an appraiser are telling us we can lose anywhere from ten to thirty-five percent of value of our home. That is our investment, that is our biggest investment. And so I'm kind of darned if I do, darned if I don't, I can't live there if this goes in, my husband would die if he lives there, and I can't sell my home. So it, it leaves us in a pickle, and I didn't think we would have to, to do that. I'm not opposed to development, I'm not opposed to cement, I just think the application of it being here, this property is way not suited for that. The fact that there are, you know, ninety to ninety-five of those residents, those are residences, they're not commercial, certainly not industrial. And it's interesting, I've talked to literally hundreds of community members right there within that, that area, within Prairie Grove Lincoln, I own a business right up the hill from there, I live not even an eighth of a mile from the proposed location of this, and some of them are like, "Why in the world would they even consider putting that in a residential area? That'd be like plopping that over in the subdivision on the other side of town, or right up next to it." Several people said, "We'll buy their property at a profit, give them a profit, just to get them to locate it somewhere that's more suited for this, because we do need cement." And in studying, I have nothing against this company, but I do have friends that do live up near the gentry plant, and in speaking with them, they have not been practicing good neighbor policy. They say, and I think it's fantastic that they're going to plant trees, they're going to put in a retention pond, but they're not practicing those policies in, in gentry. And then after reading through that lawsuit, if you do read it, what the plaintiffs are saying, it's true. Another thing is, you, when you think about just the trucks, if they say five to six cement trucks a day are going to be coming in and out of there, or operating out of that location, in my mind, it's like, why in the world would they spend literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop this, because you're not going to make that much off of five to six trucks? And with that five to six trucks, we were kind of looking into it, and they can do a turnaround load in about an hour, okay? And if they need sixteen support trucks for those six trucks to bring in the raw materials, that would be twenty-four trucks in a day, right? And so, or twenty-four trucks in an hour's time, and if they're operating ten hours a day, how many actual trucks are going to be pulling in and out of that spot? And it is a very, very dangerous spot to be doing that. Again, I just feel like I'm fighting for my life, I feel like I have talked to you and gotten to know some amazing community members, and I have yet to find one person that I have spoken to that's in favor of this. They didn't know about it, they didn't know where it was going to be located, and frankly, they are just absolutely horrified that they would even consider this. There are so many more locations that are better suited for this, right there in Greenland, West Fork area, there's already two. Why not put them where they're already zoned for that, and they've already been approved for that? So we aren't asking that they stop production of cement, that is fantastic that we need that, we're just asking that they find a more suited location for that, that is not going to affect over ninety families right there in that half-mile radius. And I do thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right.
Hello, my name is Alejandro Victorino, and I live at eleven-six-nine North Heritage Avenue in Fayetteville, but my family has a farm at one-six-two-four-two West Highway sixty-two, we are actually neighbors. And I would like to first echo a few things that my fellow community members have said so far tonight, and I would also like to thank you all for your undivided attention tonight. Yes, we do need more concrete available for the growing community, it is the most positive thing for our community to have a resource like this available for us, but it does come at the cost of the health, wellness, well-being, and the property value, which I know the business aspect of this is very, very important, of our community. We had a family Realtor, Bethel Martinez, with Harris Heights Realty, do a comp for us, and just real quick, she, at this current moment, this is a statement, "The Navarro family asked me to run a comparable property analysis to understand the current market value of their land. Based on my research, the property could currently sell for approximately fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars per acre. However, the potential impacts of the cement company's expansion, with the, the potential impacts of the cement company's expansion, the property could lose fifteen to twenty percent of its value. For example, if I valued at fifty-two, five-hundred per acre, a fifteen to twenty percent decrease would reduce it to roughly forty-two to forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars per acre." Now, this is going to come to a, this is going to cause a significant financial loss to my family, and to those who live nearby from this proposed industrial site. Another thing that we also have to take into account is the operation of this facility. What's going to happen in the winter, when everything freezes over? Are they just going to stop production completely? I have family, and I myself have worked in concrete before in the past, and our solution to that is to start pouring at around, I'm sorry, in, in the summer, is whenever it's too hot to start pouring in for everything to start, for, where everything starts to settle, when the sun is out, our solution to that is to start pouring at one in the morning, and two in the morning. And if we're ordering concrete, which we do in Missouri, from this exact company, at one or two in the morning, what time are they starting up their mixing trucks? What time are they going to start up their facility? Are they going to just say, "No, we're, the community doesn't want us to have this operating at this time, so we're not going to accept your money, and we're not going to accept your orders?"
Yes, sir, the hours of operation, those sorts of things would be addressed in the large-scale development, that's, that's really, we're looking at conditional use permit for the property tonight. Now, all those sorts of aspects and restrictions would be, would be put upon it during the large-scale development process.
So we will allow this to happen, and we will allow this to get to the point where we have to address this issue?
We are, if a conditional use permit is approved by us and ratified by the CORM Court, then they would proceed with the large-scale development. Through that process, we would address hours of operation, all the, all the aspects, all the concerns that have been expressed tonight, that would be part of the large-scale development process, yes, sir.
Thank you for addressing that.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, other than just echoing, that's all that I could do is, would be to echo the concerns of my fellow community members. You mentioned the CORM Court, you mentioned that if this were to go ahead and pass and move on to them, that then they would be the people in charge of regulating and allowing for this business, this proposed business to move on to the development process, correct?
I would defer to the county attorney, I mean, if I misspoke there, but... Yeah, the, I mean, the enforcement, the enforcement of this has nothing to do with the CUP, but the enforcement of this, based on the ordinances passed by the county, the enforcement arm is the sheriff's office that enforce all laws and ordinances in Washington County.
So we, we are making it very, very aware to everyone in the community that the enforcement of this will be the duty of the sheriffs, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And then the people who will be working with this, if this, the CB, the C...
CUP. The conditional use permit, it's what we're addressing tonight, yes, sir.
Correct. And just a quick statement, just to close, the Quorum Court, those are all elected officials, correct, who we as community members have some say in, correct? And they will be the folks that we will need to be addressing if you all decide to go ahead and move forward with this.
Yes. Sir, this is not a question-and-answer session, okay? You're welcome to make your comments to the board, but the board and myself are not here to answer, I mean, this is your time to speak in favor or opposition of this project.
Well, thank you, sir, for addressing that. Thank you for your undivided attention.
Yes, sir.
And, well, with that being said, I guess it is very well understood that I am very, very much against this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight.
I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Anybody else like to address this?
Hello, everyone. My name is Margaret Hildebrandt. You heard from my daughter Carrie and my son-in-law Nichols. I purchased a property right next to theirs, which is directly across the road from this proposed plant. I've been working for the last 50 years of my life. This was going to be my last home. But if this plant goes in, that's probably not going to happen. So I'm asking you, one human being, two others, not as a planning board, but as a human being, would you want this in your backyard or your front yard? Would you want your children or grandchildren to be breathing this? All of these fine folks have legitimate reasons. There is studies that prove that there's no difference between a cement plant and a ready-mix plant when it comes to the emissions. So I would like you to consider that as well. I would also like to ask the applicants, or Mr. Scott, if this is so low-impact, would they like it in their backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Ma Molina, and I live at 16161 Bill Campbell Road. And I am less than 100 feet from the land that the O'Briens purchased. And I can see the land from my bedroom window. On October the 1st, I remember that there was some roadwork being done to renew the highway, right, that's right in front of us, Highway 62. And all night, I was up, because, I mean, that's even further from the less than 100 feet that they're going to be at, and I couldn't sleep. And I have two beautiful girls that are here tonight. My oldest daughter just turned 11. She learned to care for the cows there, to give them injections, to help with chickens, because she loves it. The love that was born, that dream of her becoming a veterinarian one day was born there. So, to you guys, I know you have a decision to make, and it seems like you've already made it. But before you do, I beg you, please, take even a moment and ask God for conviction and wisdom. In Matthew 25:40, it says, "The king will reply, 'Truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me.'" And if you choose to protect us, this community, I believe God will bless you for it. I say that with certainty, because I am a child of God, and I have seen His faithfulness again and again. And when you do what is right, when we protect what is good, He honors that. Please don't let one company destroy what has been taking us families many years to build. Please help us, give us a fighting chance. If you approve the CUP, you take that fighting chance, so please.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good evening.
Edward Piercy, 1828 East Pridemore Drive, Lincoln, Arkansas. I own the property that's directly in front of them. I was planning on putting a nursery in. I don't know if that's feasible now. Kind of just searching on what I'm actually going to do with my property now, depending on whether this actually goes in. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other public comment on this? Good evening.
Thank you all for your time. My name is Megan Post. I live about two miles from the property proposed. I was outside in there earlier with the first session. You all were talking about the recycling plant. I don't know who asked, but a member of the board asked, are there other facilities in the area doing the same thing? Nothing is doing the same thing as this facility. I fear that this would open the floodgates to similar facilities. I think this would destroy the character of our community. This is not smart growth, and I know the Northwest Arkansas Council is very interested in smart growth. Highway 62 is extremely dangerous in that area. If you've driven that area, you understand. I have three young teenage drivers. This scares me to death. This is not a four-lane road. This is a two-lane road. Yes, it's an artery. People come from Oklahoma. People come from Greasy Valley, like myself, every day for work to drive that way. My kids drive down Greasy Valley to get to school. If a concrete truck or a gravel truck pulls out of that blind spot, I fear they will get hit and they will die. That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the applicant.
Do I want to be able to make just one thing that sort of ties up a couple of these issues? So, now I know Ms. Odom's not going to believe me, she, because she, everything we said, she goes, well, they, that might not be true. But you got to, we've accepted the sincerity of all these complaints, and I'm not going to say that any of these people are just saying it because they're mean. I think they believe it. There's been tears shed. But I also want to assure everyone that in this detailed study, the concern is, there is an actual operation of an O'Brien plant that's been challenged and alleged to be improper, and it's been studied by a highly qualified environmental firm. And so I'm going to read just a couple of lines that I believe will be finalized any day, but from the report we had, it says, "He uses the word 'strain on the environment,'" which specifically in these engineering terms means, "The pressure and demand placed by industry and operations on the natural environment, which can lead to a degradation of the natural environment." And they have studied at length the actual operations of an O'Brien facility. And when it came to each of these things, air quality, they've taken actual measurements of particulates during operational days, and the conclusion is, it's not considered an environmental strain on the surrounding area, the partic, by an engineer, not just someone who's scared and doesn't want it, you know, knocked in my backyard. The sound has been studied, detailed measurements from all sorts of points, found it is not considered a strain on the environment in the surrounding area, the sound from the operations. Operational light, exact same thing, detailed measurements of, however you measure light, foot candles, not considered to be a strain on the surrounding environment. And the same goes for groundwater, not polluting the groundwater. It doesn't produce, pollute the groundwater. You could find articles, everybody who hates any kind of industry probably, you can find articles that say it doesn't cause a problem. You can study the actual operations of an actual ready-mix plant, and the studies and the measurements say it's not a risk of strain to the environment in the surrounding area. And there's, however many, there's a plaintiff in this lawsuit, and Gentry doesn't even live there anymore, sold his property, but he hadn't removed himself from the case, and he's still complaining theoretically on paper. And we've asked all those people detailed questions, and again, like Mr. Zeg, I'm not going to try that case. But hearsay and statements about things of people who aren't here, all those people, most of them just say, there's one guy leading that suit, and they go, see what he said. I kind of believe what he said. They don't have any examples that it's bothering them personally. And so I just ask that, again, I think this, you guys know how this goes, and we have a, it's tough when you want to do, come in and do something, and you have people who show up and say, you know, you're going to be bad, but we were just trying to let you know that if there's any question about the credibility or the truthfulness of O'Brien, they've put their money where their mouth is and studied it and got, taken measurements, and the conclusions are, the operations, it's not actually, at the level they're operating, a strain on the neighboring environment. And so I hope that would at least give the board and the public some comfort, that it's not going to be doomsday. And finally, again, to make sure it's very clear, tonight is not approving the construction of the operation, because I know there was still, I heard some confusion. It only allows us to show you and have a conversation and satisfy, through the Quorum Court, through the process, that what is proposed and designed is accepted pursuant to rules. And rules can be enforced if they're not followed. So that's, you know, I just like to kind of bring it full circle, sort of from our position, you know, without, you know, a lot of emotion. I don't sound like I have emotion necessarily, but, you know, it's business and it's, but you are, to be in business, you've got to be a good neighbor, and you got to comply with the city, counties, state, and whoever governs your act, you got to operate within that, or you get thrown out of business. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions of the applicant from board members? Go ahead, Micah.
Are the operating hours set for currently? Are they hard and fast?
Yes and no, like the gentleman.
Yeah, can you come back up to the...
Yes and no. Normally, our operating hours are from 5:30 to 4:00. But like the gentleman toward the end said, during the summertime, we will start earlier. I can provide our start times throughout the year from our facility up the road. I do not believe we have started anymore before 3:00. I know we haven't started at 1:00 or 2:00 before down here. But I can provide those, and you can get a very detailed of what we've done over the past year. But the weather is, does cause us to do changes of our hours. Like the last couple hours, we haven't, or days we haven't been until 8:00 o'clock.
Again, though, that would be addressed through a large-scale development. What's before the board tonight is conditional use approval, so the applicant can proceed with a large-scale development. Other questions of the applicant?
Do we consider visibility tonight for the traffic or to the compatibility?
Jake, that's going to be provided during the large-scale, correct? The triangles and like the visibility and the study of like the potential traffic?
Yep. So as far as visibility from the highway, we provided a plan tonight, actually, that shows screening surrounding the entire property. I asked that we, we can put a condition upon this conditional use permit for us to provide a photometric plan that shows no bleeding across the property lines. And with the large-scale development submittal, we will show ash-toe triangles, just like Sam mentioned.
So what took on traffic?
My concern is the traffic study, or I guess I'm, the entrances bothering me, so that's when I want to know whether, when we address that.
That would be part of the large-scale development. Any sort of visibility, sightline, traffic study, that would be part of the large-scale development. Tonight, we're talking about conditional use for that, that the conditional use has to be approved or appealed before a large-scale development would be...
And our daughter, they're going to be informed during the large scale, so if they have any conditions or like any adjustment or modification to the, that entrance, they have to meet them before they can move forward. Yep.
And then obviously, conversations about, you know, runoff, that sort of stuff. You guys are EPA licensed.
Yeah, we'll be state-regulated.
And so obviously, if we get to a large-scale development, that's going to be something that's critical, you know, what those EPA regulations are and requirements there for. Okay. There's a lot of similarities to this and the previous one. I mean, it's, 62 is not a great road, but it is a major arterial, just like 412 is, I mean, we don't have zoning in the county.
412, to me...
It's the major arterial from West Washington County, from Fayetteville to the state line.
And I guess you would argue at some point in time, it will be four lanes.
Well, it's like everything else, I mean, development brings road improvement.
And the, the 412, I mean, when we start talking about a four-lane road with turning lanes versus two-lane, I mean, there is, I would argue, there's some difference there as it sits.
I would agree. But there's not a four-lane road like Highway 412 that services Western Washington County. There's not a four-lane option at this time. So it's about land use and compatibility. It's a decision we have tonight. Any other questions of the board? I mean, we, we need, we need to take, we need to take action. Due process, there's an appeal process. We need, I believe in due process, so I would ask that we, we take action on the item.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the two conditions that the applicant stated, the water testing and the photometric plan.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I will second. I think my concerns will be addressed at the later meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Micah Thompson?
Yes.
Robert Doherty?
Yes.
Marla Pearson?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Lauren Sheckelford?
Yes.
Five.
All right. Let's move on. The next item on the agenda is the Pup Town Doggy Daycare CUP.
Come on, let's, let's clear the, let's clear this.
We get bailiff.
Hey!
You liar!
You show me that I want to the morning, Martin, for your kids.
You liar!
Martin, for your house, your friend, and your, for your little kids.
Every day, my family, you go to the vision and the my book.
Viscerology map, site map, neighbor map. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate and construct a dog daycare and boarding facility, Pup Town Doggy Daycare. The project would utilize 1.7 acres out of a 4.22 acre parcel. The hours of operation would be 7:00 to 6:00 PM daily, with drop-off and pickup by appointment only. The business will initially employ one staff member, with plans to expand to up to four employees as demand grows. Construction of the facility is planned in two phases to accommodate future expansion as needed. Phase one construction would include a 10,000 square foot office building equipped with water, electricity and a septic system, 10 nine by 20 striped asphalt parking stalls, one ADA parking space, a solar lit sign at the interest, entrance, and 15 10 by 10 mobile dog cottages with electricity and individual fenced in play yards. Phase two of the development will allow for the addition of up to 20 additional mobile dog cottages. If a conditional use permit is approved, this project will need to proceed to the full large scale development process for each phase of the project construction. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints in opposition to this project. One email was received requesting additional clarification. Planning conditions.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Any questions of board from staff? Okay, seeing none, it's the applicant or applicant's representative here. If you would please state your name and address for the record and tell us a little about the project, sir.
Uh, Adam Osweiler, uh, on behalf of Robin Slaton and the project Pup Town Doggy Daycare. I'm with McCullin Consulting Engineers. My address is 102 West 26th Circle, uh, here in Fayetteville, Arkansas. Um, I'm here to answer any questions or any kind of clarification for the board, uh, that you guys may have or the public. Um, we're seeking to do this conditional use permit for a doggy daycare in the area that I think will facilitate the area quite well. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be here to answer those.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from board?
It's a good one. Where's the dog poop go?
It, when we get through the LSD process, uh, it'll be treated just like it would be if it was human waste. Um, we're working with a septic designer, whether that is a shared use type system, uh, for both human and, uh, dog waste, or if it's a separate system altogether. We're, when we get to that point, we'll, we'll make sure to accommodate per state regulations.
Sorry for smirking. It's.
You're fine.
That was one of the comments from the department.
It was one of the clarification questions, yes.
And, and obviously there's plans to expand as well.
Yes, correct. And so those, whatever design is put into place would be taken care of with the, the future phases as well, too.
Yeah, we got a feedback. We're hearing ourselves delayed 15 seconds there. So, okay. And again, conditional use permit today, those sorts of specifics would be addressed in large scale development. All right. Anybody in the public like to make public comment on this item? I don't like to hear myself speak once, more or less twice. So, all right. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
IT, could you just like break the, um, relay, please?
Question I do have the applicant. Have you seen the planning conditions, recommendation for requirements on this CUP? Any concerns or issues with those?
Not really. I think most of those will be answered during the, during the actual design process. We're still pretty early with what that actually looks like as far as building materials, things like that. Uh, the daycare area itself is going to be screened in and fenced. And we understand that, you know, the hours of operation are probably a concern for the, uh, surrounding, surrounding neighbors. And I think we had those in that CUP as well. Those will more than likely be reflected in the, the large scale development as well.
The county engineer also like recommended this to go to large scale so they can.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'm going for approval.
We got a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving on. Poplin Automotive Conditional Use Permit. We'll start with staff report, please.
Vicinity map, site map, neighbor map. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to bring the subject property into compliance in order to continue operating an automotive repair business, Poplin Automotive Specialists LLC. The applicant is now actively engaged in the permitting process to ensure full compliance with county regulations. Poplin Automotive Specialist operates from a 40 by 60 metal building located on the applicant's two acre parcel with business operations confined to approximately one acre. The business services three to four vehicles per week, primarily passenger vehicles with occasional work performed on Goshen Fire Department vehicles. The property owner is a sole employee. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, five to eight PM and Saturday's eight AM to eight PM. The project site includes 40 by 60 metal building equipped with electricity and a water spigot. A 30 by 15 gravel parking area is located on the east side of the building. On the west side of the building, three applicant owned vehicles and a tractor are parked. The shop is not connected to septic or plumbing systems. To date, planning has received three complaints regarding the project and one comment and support.
Okay, thank you.
Some shop building photos, conditions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions of staff and board members?
I've got one for staff. In what regards were the complaints? Specifics, like what, what were their?
Yeah, the complaints were like, um, it's like the noise, uh, the traffic, uh, the use of the shared access easement. So the, the, the neighbors like they have like shared access easement for like they own the property. And the applicant like, um, uses that like to, to, um, enter like and exit like his, uh, business and his house. So that was like the traffic on that like access easement is like a problem.
So I guess the argument was that when he agreed to give him the easement, he did not agree to give it to him expecting a commercial business to be.
Well, that's the, normally like the, the access easement is like an agreement between property owners. So I'm not sure like if they ever like had like an agreement to maintain or like maintenance agreement. That's something not, nothing like we've like explored, but that's because it's like between property owners. So it's a separate matter.
Any other question from board of staff? Okay. It's the applicant or applicant's representative here.
Good evening. My name is Justin Poplin. I live at 22582 Mason Road, Fayetteville. I am intending on starting a shop. Uh, I already do a lot of work for family and friends' vehicles. The plan is about three to four vehicles a week. I don't plan on being a high, uh, high traffic shop. Occasionally there is a tow truck that comes up. That's just part of an automotive shop. We've lived at the property since 2015. On, to address your comment about the shared easement, uh, the easement states utility and access to my property. We, we purchased the house in 2015, built the shop in 20, and it was completed, started in, November of, or October of 2021, and it was completed in April of 2022. Uh, the people that bought the house or the land next to us and have built the house, bought the house after the shop was already there. I have spoke with them the first time I met them and I had told them that I was planning on building the shop. They, they've known all along. The house is on the side of a hill. One of their complaints has always been the water runoff. It's, it's the side of a hill. I can't control God. The, the water does wash out the driveway. I do my best to keep the driveway graded. I, I use my tractor to grade the driveway. So I don't plan on getting to be a huge shop. I, I'm sure growth will happen, but I don't plan to be hiring more than just family. I want this shop to be something that I raise my, I've got six kids, whatever kids that are interested in learning, which I've got two right now that are of age to work and, and love coming down there and learning in the shop. And that's really my biggest thing is I just want to teach my boys about cars. We, the project vehicles in the back are cars that we are building with me and my boys, um, just for hobbies. As for any questions about fluids, I, I do not have a holding tank for oil. Um, I have a drain, a drain pan. And when it gets to five gallons, I take it to O'Reilly's and empty it. And that shows how little work that I do. I'm not a, a quick loop shop. I don't do a bunch of oil changes. It seems like about once every month I have to empty fluids. So I'm not worried about fluids being a spill of an issue. I, I pick up all of my parts myself. I don't have delivery trucks come out. I don't plan on putting up any signs. Uh, I just want it to grow by word of mouth and, and not planning on advertising. I don't do tire work, so there will never be tires stacked up outside of any sort. And, um, as for any questions about increased traffic on the roads, a quarter mile to the east of me is six, uh, chicken houses. And if anybody's lived by chicken houses, they understand that all day long, there's semi trucks going to the chicken houses. They do a very good job keeping up our dirt road for that reason. So I don't think that increased traffic with me working on three to four vehicles a week is going to be an issue. The biggest thing is just that I want to be able to be self-employed. I want to be able to raise my boys, my, my children that want to learn and teach them. Um, just teach them about cars and hard work.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant from board members? Okay, thank you. Open it up to public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to make public comment on this item?
Good evening. My name's John Hendricks. I'm a Goshen resident. I've lived in Goshen for 24 years and shortly after I moved into Goshen in 2001, I started a business, my, business at my house. It was a major difference in my life being able to start a business at my house and it led to some great things in my life. I've known Justin for six plus years. I first knew him as a volunteer firefighter with Goshen. Recently as a founding member of the newly reestablished 4H in Goshen. He's a founding leader there, uh, as well as a mechanic and he's become my friend. And personal and professional dealings with Justin, he's always demonstrated honesty, integrity and good character. And that's what's led me here tonight to support him. I, uh, I want to support his desire to start a business for his family and, uh, to support his skills in the trades in that industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Kevin McCaslin. I've been, uh, friends with Justin for a while. Actually what happened, I had a Lexus. I was getting work done in, in Tulsa. And the guy said after he finished it, he goes, actually our best mechanic just moved to Fayetteville. And, uh, so you might give him a call. And so I ended up using him and the more I got to know him, I'm like, he became a friend. So all my kids have used him to get their cars worked on and I've got to know his kids. As a matter of fact, they would come to our house when we would need help, whether it was helping mow the yard or whatever. And once they pulled up with a big trailer and I was trying to get it off of Jen's truck because Justin was busy and his kids, I think one of them was like 12 years old, jumps out and unloads the trailer and the other one's helping load the stuff on, and I was like, I wish my kids were like this. Anyway, I just fell in love with his whole family and I just wanted you guys to know. It's a, he's a great man, great family. I wish he was my neighbor. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to make public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Braun Overby. Um, I reside at 935 South Liberty Drive. I'm here in favor of Justin Poplin. I was in, at this podium about two, little over two years ago, going through the same thing. And guys, we only had five members that night. We still got a three to two vote in favor of us, but by default, we lost the, lost the, the board meeting. So we went, went on to quorum court and guys at quorum court, we won 12 to two. I mean, it's, it's just that simple. This is a great man trying to teach his kids, work for himself. I'm, I, I don't see why this is a, he shouldn't get this passed through today and not through quorum, but. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else like to make public comment? Hi.
Hello, I am Raina Hart and my husband and I live at 22508 Mason Road. And, um, we are friends and neighbors of Justin Poplin. So my husband Matt couldn't be here tonight, so I've got my statement and his as well. When I think of Justin, several words come to mind and those are dedicated to his faith, family and job. He's hardworking. For as long as I have known him, um, I've known him for eight years now. He has always done what he needs to do to provide for his family. He works as an automotive technician and a volunteer firefighter for Goshen. While wearing the firefighter hat, we have seen him be the first one on scene to help his neighbors on our road, on our road countless times. Justin's a dreamer. He has talked for a long time about one day owning his own business and being able to pass it down to his children as a way to provide for his family, but also leave a legacy. He has also dreamed about having that business at home so he can spend more time with family. Um, he's a teacher. Um, in Matt's letter, you'll hear that he has taught Matt almost everything he knows about vehicles. And Justin continues to teach and mentor current and future automotive technicians. Justin is hoping to create the future automatic, automotive technicians who one day may be working on your vehicle. Justin's a friend. He walks alongside you during good and bad times. He lends a listening ear, a helping hand, a meal or a place to stay, prayers and advice when needed. Justin is honest. He is the automotive tech, automotive technician you want working on your vehicle. He is fair with his labor charge, works quickly but effectively and efficiently. We've referred several friends to Poplin Automotive and they've always thanked us for the referral and commented on how kind Justin is, along with how impressed they are with how quickly he gets the job done. We haven't noticed any change to the daily operations on our road due to Poplin Automotive opening. However, since there have been other neighbors moving on to the road as land has sold, we have seen an increase in traffic in and out of those residences. Justin Poplin and the Poplin Automotive is a family business and I back it 100%. Um, it is a business built out of a dream and a want and a, want and a ability to provide for the family now and in the future. Justin has a heart and dedication to continue his line of work and train the next generation. Um, and then my husband wrote that Justin Poplin is a friend of 13 years. Of those years, I have worked with him for more than half. It is not an understatement that he has shaped the man and technician I am today. Outside of being a mentor, he has been a friend. From the time I met Justin, he and his wife Jennifer have treated me as family, whether a weekend dinner or Thanksgiving dinner with his family circle. An invitation that did not extend only to me, but all aspiring technicians he has trained. Justin is a provider. For the entirety that I have known him, he has been the sole provider so that he and Jennifer could have one of their dreams to homeschool their children. Justin is a friend, the type of friend you hope to raise your children to find and to be. There have been countless occasions that Justin has lent his time, his money, his mind, his vehicle, and even an empty room. One I lived in for nearly three years. If there is something outside of his capabilities, he is always willing to find a way to help. Justin is a servant, even with the schedule required of being a sole provider in this day. Knowing Justin for as long as I have, he has always spoken of running an automotive shop of his own. There are multiple qualities it takes to be a technician of Justin's caliber and even more qualities it, to find one as respected and trusted. A local business founded on a dream with a family and technician like Justin Poplin is a community asset that I back wholeheartedly. And that was from my husband, Matthew Hart.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody else like to make public comment on this?
Hello. Mr. Chairman, board, I appreciate your time this evening. My name's Brett Hartley. I live at 22556 Mason Road. We own the property adjoining the west side of the Poplins. My son-in-law owns the easement. He's going to speak to you in a minute. I emailed you all this past week. I'd like to bring these up. So if you didn't get a chance to go through them, you can look at them. Sure. Yeah, we'll look at it and pass it around. This, this is not. This, this is not personal to Justin Poplin, his business or his dreams. I would like to know that Justin, that these people are describing. Mr. Poplin and his wife sued our family in an attempt to get a permanent injunction to keep us off our own land. I believe one hundred percent because of this business. What I've provided you, I spent a career where I gathered evidence. And I have provided you the evidence to go side by side with the application, not through my word, through evidence, through photographs, to see a business that operates seven days a week. They've come out of there at twelve-thirty-six AM on a Wednesday morning. We've counted up to fourteen vehicles there at a time. The project vehicles that they say that they have are actually salvage. In that book, probably toward the back, you'll see one of the vehicles that they pulled into the shop. They strip it out, strip the doors and everything else and haul the vehicle off, that's called salvage. So what you have in your hand is a slam dunk in law enforcement. It's absolute proof to destroy everything that is in that application. It is full of lies. The, the thing with the easement, this is pretty simple. I have it if you want to see it. This property benefits from a fifty-foot wide access and utility easement described as follows, and it gives the legals on that easement. There is no mention of business, commercial or general public access on that property. If you'll turn to their application, you'll see where they say that they meticulously keep that driveway. I'd like you to find that in there. You know, I appreciate Justin's service, I'm retired from a fire department, a volunteer fire department of ten years, that means nothing. But we do not consent as landowners. We've probably put three-quarters of a million dollars into a piece of property next to them and I'm looking at a junkyard. The hours of operation, if you just look at them, that's evenings when we're home. Saturdays when we're home, they operate on Sundays, I've got photographs, anything that you need, I can bring you. That's how we defeated them in court. So this is, this is not your normal, I've been sitting and listening to all this tonight. This man cannot run this business without crossing our property. As you can see, he has destroyed it. I got, I got tickled today, my son-in-law went down, take his trash out, took a picture and all of a sudden, after a couple of years, they went down and cleaned the culvert out of the ditch, last time we cleaned it out, we were cussed out by Mrs. Poplin. Got the audio of that, if y'all would like to listen to it. It, it, the problems that we've had, my, my family has literally paid hell. Let's talk taxes for a minute. The math is in there, if he runs four cars a week, it comes out to over twelve-hundred cars a year. He said that he's the one that brings the parts in, so he's also running over it, you've also got to count that. And, and all that traffic, I mean, we've, we've, we've got UPS vehicles and everything else coming up, it could be home delivery. Chances are, not everything comes in by him, but if it does, great. But that's still traffic and that's still traffic on your road. Part of the lawsuit is we put up a game camera to watch the traffic going in and out of this business, been operating about two years. They sued us for that. The first time we went to court, the judge told them, their land, they have the legal right to do that. So about three weeks ago, the sheriff shows up and I talked to the sheriff. They called the sheriff for harassment because my son-in-law, a week before, because your, your website recommends we get photos, he puts a game camera back up, they called the sheriff saying that's harassment. After a judge in this county already told them it's perfectly legal. They don't want photos captured of what's coming in and out of that business. So I started thinking about it, so I made a phone call to your assessor. The business is never assessed in Washington County. They don't pay a dime and have not paid a dime in taxes to Washington County. So it's just not my land they're tearing up, they're tearing up your road. So then I pick up the phone and I call the state of Arkansas, guess who else said, no, that business isn't registered with, with the state of Arkansas. Asked me to file a suspicious activity report, which I did. And so they're going to put what they think that you want to see on here. If you gave them a cup today, they'll never comply with a single thing you do and I will end up wearing that man out. It, it's not personal toward them, but as a family, we do not consent to this. I don't want our property destroyed. If you look in the back of that book, they even bent our fence post over. Who does that? I don't see the character that these other people are saying. Have you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them or I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is BJ Huffstetler, I'm going to tell this up so I don't bend over. I'm, I reside at two-two-eight, two-two-five-five-eight Mason Road with my wife and my two children. I've got a couple of pictures for y'all if that's okay as well. So as this business has been operating, just looking at the planning conditions. Number nine states that salvage or non-operational vehicles shall not be.
Stored or kept on.
Stored or kept on site. He's got three on the east side that he showed you a picture of, there are several others that are non-operational that are also sitting there. And then number eleven says provides reasonable screening to neighboring properties. No trees, no screening. You all, if you've ever been to a mechanic shop, you know how loud it is, nothing to deter any of that noise. I purchased the property as a residential property, we moved out of the city to get away from traffic, to get away from commercial property, that sort of stuff. About nine acres so that my kids could enjoy it. And it's, it's eroding and partially because of their business and the way that they've cut the easement driveway. My kids go to Shallow Christian, my wife teaches there and she's the head of their 4H group that operates out of Bitten County because Washington County wasn't available at the time. We have 4H projects, right now we're raising chickens through the 4H project that are directly south, down the hill of the Poplin Automotive business that's been running. We share a trash service, Trumbo Trash Service. It's residential, just like they take out my trash. We see them burn and there's pictures and videos of that that we could provide up behind their house. So instead of just incorporating the one acre for the property, they burn a lot of the material behind their house. Being a volunteer firefighter, we have pictures of him burning stuff behind his house during a burn ban with nobody outside watching it, just black smoke billowing up out of the carcinogens. My goal was to build my personal driveway on that side of the property. But as you can see, they cut us out of our property three days before we closed. My in-laws used to drive a Toyota Camry that could pull from that driveway to our property. There's now a big ditch that they've cut out. We believe that was intentional because they had opportunities to buy that property before us. We've offered to sell that partial, part of the property, we've offered to sell more than an acre that's just off them. They refused to buy it because they wanted to take us to court to try to keep us off our own property and to take ownership of it. They claim that they meticulously keep up with that easement. He starts at the top of his property and scrapes it down all the way. The ditch across the street has been filled in with sediment from that driveway and that easement. The picture that I just shared with you, if it's not good enough for her personal vehicle to drive on, what makes it good enough for commercial traffic to be on it? They have landlocked property, I understand they have an access and utility easement, but I don't think that grants, that was to their property at two-two-five-eight-two Mason Road, not the business property at two-two-five-eight-zero. I don't think commercial traffic should be able to go over residential easements that were, that were decided many years ago. Anybody have any questions?
I think we're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment on this?
My name is Chris Cooper, I live at thirty-one-seventy-five North Oakland Zion Road. And sure appreciate your work here, I have no idea why you want to do it, you guys are amazing, thank you. Just heard those two fellows and, and I've met Jo, I met Justin when a friend of mine told me that he had a wonderful Toyota mechanic. And I have two Toyota vehicles, so I took my two vehicles to Justin and was blown away by A, his ability to, to fix vehicles. And B, one of my vehicles is a oh-five Toyota Tundra, it has two, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand miles on it. The reason I tell you that is, he was above reproach and so honest with what needed to be fixed and what didn't need to be fixed. So honesty is the top, he's just a high moral caliber guy. Over the years, had the opportunity to meet his family, who, who gets to do life with his mechanic's family, they're phenomenal. Jen is, they don't come any better, and you've already heard about his family, they're, they're phenomenal. I have a special needs son and they have, they have loved my kid like few others. And again, I'm talking about my mechanic who has above and beyond built relationship. That just speaks to who he is as a person and who his family is. I would love for them to be my next door neighbor, so again, thank you guys very much for what you do.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. All right, any other public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close with a public comment, bring it back to the board, question of applicant?
Did I hear that they were already running a business at this location?
Sam, I'll let you address that.
Yes, ma'am, I'm like, we contacted them after the complaint that came from the neighbors, so like we brought them into compliance, they were out of compliance.
Uh, you're the, part of the applicant, yeah. I mean, we were, we're bringing it back to the applicant before we take action.
Okay. I am Jennifer Poplin, co-owner of Poplin Automotive. I just wanted to address a couple of things, I have some photos, if I could pass these out.
They say that we.
If you can pass this out, I'm sorry. So I wanted to address a couple of the things that they spoke on. Taxes, number one, we just created our LLC and just started this business. We have been operating on friends and families' vehicles previously and paying taxes on those. Yes. We do have vehicles, three project vehicles that are titled in our names, that we, they're just projects. Not part of the business, they are something that we work on as a family. We did have a couple of vehicles that they're referring to as salvage vehicles that we fixed up to make a nice vehicle for our daughter for her sixteenth birthday.
We took three, three wrecked vehicles, or two wrecked vehicles to make one good vehicle. And then I've already hauled those two vehicles that I'm thinking they have the pictures of to the scrapyard. They are no longer on, on our property.
I'm also not positive what court case they're speaking of that they won. But that is public record, if you guys would like to look at that. We did take them to court over harassment and these pictures show that. They tried to keep us off of our easement, they would block people from coming and going from our property. It has been constant harassment since the day they moved in.
On the side of the driveway so that we can't mow it, so the grass is this tall and that's what they're claiming, we can't, we don't maintain it.
They were ordered to clean all of that up after court and it's been a year and a half later and they've never touched it. We do burn paper and wood, I believe that's legal, on our personal property, not at the business. And.
Just boxes.
We, yeah. And we have trash service for all of our trash.
As for taxes goes, I do not have a tax ID, so when I buy my parts, I pay taxes on the parts that I purchase. And then on the profit, on the labor, I claim a profit through my personal taxes with an EIN.
But yeah.
Okay, appreciate it, any other, any questions of the applicant from board members?
When was that picture taken?
The pictures that, of the rocks?
The pictures that you just.
The ones that you just gave us?
Yes, these were March sixth, twenty twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yes.
Four, we went to court in four. Yes, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any other questions of the applicant?
Can I state one more thing?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine, we do meticulously maintain the driveway. We have a tractor and we blade the driveway regularly. They enjoy coming over and taking pictures after the rain has washed the driveway out.
I only drag the driveway up to bring the gravel back up the hill, like I said, we live on a very steep grade. So the one, every, just a little bit of rain washes the driveway out.
And we have video footage, they claimed that we don't maintain the driveway. We have video footage of, within the last couple of months, them coming and harassing us for maintaining the driveway.
And I did call the sheriff two weeks ago because it was not because of his game cam, it was because as I was, we, we just had come home from church and he was at the bottom of the driveway working and he steps out, pulls his phone out and videos us all the way up the driveway. And I, I called the sheriff and asked if that was legal and over the phone, they said no. But when they came back and then they, I guess reviewed the footage talking to him, he doesn't video me on my property, he just videos me on the easement and that is legal.
They told us, keep meticulous documentation of everything they've done. That because he is ex-police, he is walking the line of what's legal. So basically just keep documentation and wait for him to cross the line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sam, I guess I'll ask you, ingress egress civil matter, correct?
Easements, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So.
That's really not a per view.
Yeah, we've, we've never explored if they have any agreement that, I mean, like of course, like the recorded documentation with the survey and like the exhibits and all of this is public record, but we've never explored or asked if they have any agreement, like maintenance agreement. I mean, I, I, I know that from previous experience, surveys were recommended just in case, but we've never explored this. Because we did not, we did not want to get involved in like civil matters.
Okay, all right. Ryan, you concur with that?
Oh, there we go. Uh, yes, you know, the easement issue is not something that we as the county can, can take on, I mean, this is all a civil matter, even, you know, issue or, or improper use of property for, without a conditional use permit. But the, as far as the, the easement issue is concerned between these property owners, that is something that a, that a circuit court would have to, have to weigh in on between them.
Okay, then materially, it's not anything that we have control over affects our decision on the conditional use permit?
No, I, I, I mean, not really, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any other questions of staff?
I've got a question for staff.
Please.
If this was any other business under any other circumstances, doing business as an automotive repair shop, would they have to have working facilities, I mean bathrooms, septic, the drainage, things like that, that we would expect at a normal repair shop? Even though they don't have.
Yes.
According to the application, three to four cars, but five to twenty, what's the limit that they would need to comply with things like, you know, oil, you know.
Oh, definitely, so that's why we put, we put like the conditions based on like what the information we got, like the inputs we got, like we put like the outputs and the feedback we got like from the reviewers, like technical reviewers. So to, to the like, we got like the comments from the neighbors and that's why we have like number like four, number seven, number like eight, nine, so seven, eight and nine is just like a response to the neighbors' comments. So make sure like that does not turn into like a salvage yard, make sure like the environmental aspects of it. And like don't, I mean, like maximum four cars. And like, don't, yeah, I mean, like maximum four cars based on what they said, like in the application, we don't need more. So it's going to be contained to that, like, uh, size of that shop building that they have and like whatever they can like provide as like one employee business. But when it comes to the ADH, like whatever, like the, uh, they don't have, uh, and that's in the staff report. We have the communication where between us and the applicant and the, like, health department. This is like specifically, there is no like w- water, like because they don't have, they don't have the septic. Once they start like using water or add service to that building, they need to have a septic like installed and need to be evaluated. So the agreement is no water service because you don't have a septic. You can use that, like you can wash hands and drain whatever like water that goes into the drain, regular drain in your house. Because it's like the proximity. If it was like just a standalone business, they should have like, uh, it was like, it would be required, but they have, they have another alternative so they can use the septic.
So what if you wash a car?
Uh, I don't know, like if they wash cars or not. It's like everyone else like washes car in front of his house, but like I'm assuming they don't. We, that was never like part of the, uh, the inputs we got like from them in that application. You can always add a condition, no washing cars.
So, so let me, let me get, well, I'm not there yet. I, I mean, I guess, so, so my standpoint is, so if this is approved, he gets a CUP. Neighbor gets new fifteen-point checklist to monitor. And this, I mean, at that point, you know, if it says however many cars, there's now a document there that says this number of cars and no more, right?
Well, we put a condition that like the maximum is four, and if, we, we, we are like operating based on, um, complaints. So this, the neighbors or anyone else, yeah, complaint-based. And so if anyone complains about it, we go and investigate. We reach out the same way we reach out to him to apply. So that, that's, that sort of thing. We, we, we don't go like every like week to make sure, ah-ha, you have a five instead of a four.
Correct, yeah, we're not gonna do it, but
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna like, we're, we're gonna like make sure like the honor system is always there.
All right. Any other questions? I guess I should have asked that question from the applicant. You've seen the conditions recommended for approval. You're in agreement with those? Okay, thank you for the record. Okay. Bring it back to the board for action.
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion for approval. Second. And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to county land development hearings now. Uh, we're just gonna start with the Carroll Minor Subdivision. Start with staff report, please.
Vicinity map. Site map. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision to split the parent tract into two tracts. Currently, the parent tract is four-point-one-seven acres after the split. Lot one would be two-point-oh-nine, and lot two would be two-point-zero-eight acres. Conditions.
Okay, is that it? All right, appreciate it. So is the applicant or applicant's representative here? Thank you for your patience tonight too, sir.
Absolutely. My name is Casey Carroll. I live at one-five-one-eight Lacy Drive, Fayetteville, Arkansas. Um, I am one of the owners of the, of the tract that we're discussing here tonight, and I'm just here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Okay, so we're basically splitting four rough acres into two, two rough acre lots. You've got frontage on both. Is there any easements, anything like that?
There is a seventy-foot, uh, access and utility easement coming into the property, and then we were required to get a, I believe, thirty-foot utility easement for the power to go to the south lot.
Okay, and those are defined on the plat?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions of the applicant from board? Okay, anybody want to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Sam, for the record, because I always do, why is this not approved administratively? Why does this take planning board action?
You're cre- you're creating two, uh, this is a subdivision. However, it does not look like a sub, uh, so, no, that's not the one. They're creating, they're creating two lots at both like, both of them at like less than five acres.
Thank you, sir, for the record. All right, any other questions of staff from the board? Any action recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on. Replat lots three and four, Wendy Hills Estates. We'll start with the staff report, please.
Vicinity map. Site map. The applicant is requesting a replat of lots three and four within Wendy Hill Estates subdivision. Currently, lot three is five-point-seven-two acres, and lot four is five-point-nine-five acres. After the proposed property line adjustment, lot three A will be four-point-four-five acres, and lot four A will be seven-point-two-two acres. Conditions.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's the one in the subdivision, so they're like moving lines.
Yep, okay. All right, is the applicant or applicant's representative here? Again, thank you for your patience, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Alan Reed, one-eighteen South College, Fayetteville, Arkansas, here representing Mr. Tim Mason. I appreciate your time, and Mr. Mason, uh, owns quite a operation out there, and he's got, um, his, a huge, it's not a barn, but it's indoor horse faci- facility, and he's got a property line going through us, so we are wanting to replat it, get everything clear and, and, uh, put it back in shape.
Okay.
I'll answer any questions you might
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Anybody want to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I'm gonna move for approval.
We got a motion for approval. Second. And a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, final item tonight. S Properties Minor Subdivision Two, staff report, please.
Vicinity map. Site map. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision to split the parent tract into three tracts. Currently, the parent tract is nine-point-four-six acres. After the split, tract A would be three-point-zero-one, tract B would be three-point-four-four, and tract C would be three-point-zero-one. Conditions.
Thank you. Questions, staff?
Same thing, creating like, um, more than two lots at like less than five acres. That's why it's a minor subdivision. And Mr. Tim West, the surveyor on the project, he already called me this morning. He was double booked in another city, so he's unable to, and it's too late for him, but to come back, so. Any question we can answer?
Staff's reviewed, no concerns from staff?
Yes, sir. I'm like, we got all like the feedback, like from the, uh, utilities, and it's been added already. Yep.
Yeah, and then ingress egress, there's dedicated easement back to C?
Yeah, the ease, access easement, like the thirty-foot, like to the south that serves like lot, uh, B and C, and, uh, tract A has the road frontage already, so that's good.
All right.
That meets all the requirements.
Okay, no, there are no structures on any of the proposed lots at this point?
No, it's, it's, no, it's just like, yeah.
So no septic, nothing like that?
No, septic is, is already being approved for the three of them, but there is no septic installed, so that's why they're not shown.
Okay, that was, I assumed that I wanted to ask the question.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions of staff? Anybody have any issues proceeding without applicant in person? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion, a second, and a third. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I believe that's it. We have other business.
We have one more.
Discussion of current development planning department activities, Mr. Adam.
This month, like the quorum court, like they approved like the pay raise for the, uh, planning board, like men- members from seventy-five dollars to three-hundred. So, yeah, rich right now, so, yep. And the other thing, the next meetings are like already like posted on the agenda. Uh, the next one is gonna be, um, the fourth of, uh, November, uh, December. That was, that, that will be like the last one like this year. And hopefully like by next month, we'll be able like to have the new agenda posted online for you, for your review, so you can make your, uh, preparation for next year. The other thing, we have before you like, um, submitted for your approval here, like, uh, a few changes, uh, to the fee schedule. We have not changed any of ours since, I guess, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, if I'm not like wrong. Uh, with all the demand, with all like the big volume of like a project we have, and like the changes and like almost everything, the cost of the material itself. We, we were just like requesting new changes. For the concept plans, we're like, we, we used to see back in the day when I started, we used to see like maybe one or two like a year. Now we have at least like one or two a month because lots of people, subdivisions and all of that. We need to increase, increase it from seventy-five to a hundred. Uh, the minor subdivision, which we do like about like twenty to thirty-five a month, depending on like if it's a good month or not, we need to increase it from two-fifty to three-hundred. Uh, all exemptions, uh, we need to increase it to a hundred dollars from fifty. Exemption in, in other cities, normally they have a flat fee of like a minimum of two-hundred to two-hundred-fifty, and they go like by how many like lots you have. So if you have four lots times fifty, that's another like on top of the flat fee. Uh, we're still like, we're like the cheapest, I guess, in the area. Conditional use permit or any rezoning request from two-fifty to three-hundred. Uh, variances from one-hundred to two-hundred variances are basically a conditioned use permit. It's the same process. Uh, so, and we don't see a lot of them, so that's why we made it like, uh, as everything else like low as possible. Uh, steel tower administrative review. We see about like maybe like four, minimum of three to four like a month, and it takes a lot to review. And at fifty bucks, I've heard like that from one of the AT&T representatives, like I should like apply more, it's a steal. So one hundred dollars is not that bad. Um, and the preliminary and final like large scale from, from two-hundred to three-hundred, and the gated community inspection, which is goes like to the road department. We just like want to double it. We don't, we don't see a lot of them, maybe once a year, but with the cost of like gas and all of this.
Sure.
So if you have any suggestions, please let us know.
All right, so do you need action from this board for recommendation to quorum court? Okay, obviously, I think you guys work extremely hard. I appreciate everything staff does to support this board.
Thank you.
And obviously, I mean, expenses continue to go up. Those are still very reasonably, if not underpriced compared to our neighboring counties, so I would like to make a motion for recommendation of these approvals to the quorum court for approval.
I'd second that.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, anything else?
We'll see you, uh, in two months.
I will take a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.